Good afternoon, good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to this Wednesday, September 13th, 2017, meeting of the Tallahassee City Commission. For those who are willing and able, please stand for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, we're so grateful for the protection you provided to the citizens of our city during Hurricane Irma. Thank you for the members of our community, numerous employees, mutual aid, and the assistance each one provided. Bless us all for their service, commitment, and dedication to helping others and for working together in unity. For all those impacted by the storm, we ask that you provide for their needs as they begin to rebuild their homes and their lives. Give them peace and strength during this very difficult time. Grant those wisdom in the decisions regarding the matters presented before us today, that we may continue to serve our citizens. In your name we pray, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please proceed. Mr. City Manager, are there any agenda modifications?
Just a few, Mr. Mayor. Item 13.08 has some clarifying language added to it. We've rescheduled item 13.06, and please, with your approval, we will hear item 13.09 out of order first in under policy discussion.
Right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Richardson, will you join me?
Yes.
Right, good afternoon again. First, I want to acknowledge this isn't in the program, but while the City Commission was out on its summer recess, one of our colleagues got elected to the highest position for local governments throughout the state of Florida. Want to quickly acknowledge Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Gilziffer, who is now the President of the Florida League of Cities. Commissioner, President Ziffer has made it one of his key priorities to protect local governments and home rule, and we all, those of us who have followed these past legislative sessions, know that he's got his work cut out for him, and know that you've got a City Commission that stands behind you in that work, as well as a Florida League.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Now, it is my real honor, and I want to invite forward my colleague, Commissioner Curtis Richardson, who is the sponsor of this proclamation, and I know that the entire City Commission joins him in support of a very, very deserving recognition for a very, very extremely, extremely, extremely well-deserving woman, Ms. Lynn Ann Jones Griffin. Commissioner Richardson, will you please join me for the reading of the proclamation, and you can invite forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is indeed my distinct honor and pleasure to sponsor this resolution in recognition of my neighborhood, in the Tuskegee Neighborhood Association, who was recognized last year as Mortician of the Year, which is, and that's for the state of Florida. And so I thought it just fitting that we would come tonight as a City Commission to recognize Lynn Ann Jones Griffin for her work, not only in this community, but in the Morticians Association and throughout the state of Florida. Lynn Ann and her family have been fixtures in this community for decades now, and of course have been successful business persons through the Strongman Jones Funeral Home located in the Frenchtown community, the historic Frenchtown community. And as you all will recall, Mr. Mayor, we approved a zoning request from Strongman Jones so that they could in fact maintain that business, even though they've sold, they sold the old property that the business was located on, so that they could maintain that property in the Frenchtown community, speaking to the commitment that their families have had to that community for decades now in this city of Tallahassee. And they are here tonight, Lynn Ann is here tonight, to receive this proclamation, which I'd like to read at this time. Whereas Lynn Ann Jones Griffin was born on September 15th, they wouldn't give us the year, Lynn Ann. In Bainbridge, Georgia, she is the first child of the late Albert W. Jones and Anees Augusta Stevens Jones. And whereas she graduated from Allen High School in Asheville, North Carolina, in 1965, she earned a Bachelor of Arts degree from Bethune-Cookman College and a Master of Education degree from Florida A&amp;M University in 1966. She also earned a Master of Library Science degree from Florida State University in 1977. And whereas she received a diploma in funeral services from Gupton Jones College of Mortuary Services in 1981. Since that time, Lynn Ann has worked for many years as a licensed funeral director and embalmer. She currently serves as a business owner of Strongman Jones Funeral Home Incorporated. And whereas Lynn Ann is an extraordinary woman that is passionate about life of service, not only in the business world, but also in her church, Bethel African Methodist Episcopal Church, and our pastor, Reverend Julius McAllister Jr., is here with us this evening as well. She is actively involved as a trustee and usher, president of the Pope and Aid Board Ministry at the Women's Missionary Society, and a Sunday School leader at the church. And whereas Lynn Ann founded the Florida District Five Ladies Auxiliary within the State of Florida Morticians Association in memory of her mother, Anees Augusta Stevens Jones, a founder of the Strongman Jones Funeral Home Incorporated, Lynn Ann provides an annual scholarship to a woman seeking a career in mortuary science. And whereas she serves well in a traditionally male-dominated industry of funeral services. In addition, she employs a contingency of women in her business while promoting womanhood and much-needed community employment. And whereas she holds membership in many local, state, and national organizations and has received numerous awards for outstanding service, most recently receiving the distinguished Alumni Award from Florida A&amp;M University in May of 2013, and the 2017 Florida Mortician of the Year Award from the Florida Morticians Association Incorporated. And whereas her vast contributions to enhance business, church, education, and scholarship have contributed to making her an outstanding citizen, her motto is, "Let your light shine so before men that they may see your good works and glorify your Father in heaven." Now, and this is on behalf of the mayor, therefore I, Andrew DeGillum, by the power invested in me as mayor of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, do hereby recognize Lynn Ann Jones Griffin for her significant contributions and service to the citizens of Tallahassee. Lynn Ann, would you come forward and receive this proclamation?
What can I say but thank you? A simple thank you to the commissioners, the mayor, my family, my pastor, and you citizens of Tallahassee. I don't know whether I really deserve this. I've tried to live a life that affords me to help people, and that's what I spent my whole life, helping others. And I'd like for my pastor, my aunt to stand, and my family. One of my sons is here that lives in Tallahassee.
here for this one, but if you'd stand with me, because you play such a critical role throughout this, throughout the curriculum of the Tallahassee Future Leaders Program. Confused here. I would like to announce, some of you all are familiar with our Tallahassee Future Leaders Program, which is our City of Tallahassee Summer Jobs Initiative, Summer Jobs Program, where in our first year of this program, we employed just under 100 young people who worked throughout various positions in the government. This past year, with the help of so many of our community and private sector partners, we were able to employ just under, actually just at 200 young people who spent their time this summer working in various places all throughout our community, in the public and the private sector. These 200 folks were selected to participate as part of our 2017 TFLA Program, with half the youth being paired again with local businesses and the other with the government. Over 20 business partners joined us this year as partners employing young people in their respective businesses. 62.8, nearly 63% of participants received an official dollar-wise certificate of completion for financial literacy modules through the United States Conference of Mayors. This year's programming included collaborations where our students, and some for the first time, believe it or not, all Tallahassee young people who took tours and spent a day at Florida A&amp;M University, Florida State University, and Tallahassee Community College, where they were exposed to the higher educational environment in this community, workshops, and exposure to campus life. The TFLA youth participants collectively accounted for hundreds of certificates, including consumer service and sales certificates, SafeServe certificates, occupational safety and health administration certificates, and some are currently pursuing Microsoft Skills Certifications and the American Red Cross CPA certification. If you're not familiar with some of those, some of these certifications qualify them, even at the ages that they are, for higher positions, better-paying positions in many sectors all throughout our community. And so these are certificates that are monetizable, if you will. I now want to invite forward those business partners that may be here, and I'm going to call them all out by name, and as you hear your organization mention, if you would just come forward and stand up with Commissioner Richardson and I. I asked Commissioner Richardson to be here because at almost every critical junction of this program, he was present, even in my absence, to preside over programmings, present graduation certificates, and be a steadfast encourager of our, of our youth. Our platinum partners in this program were Florida A&amp;M University, and if you'll join us, Florida State University, the Tallahassee Leon County Federal Credit Union, our gold partners, and we'll have some plaques also prepared and presented to them, our Krispy Kreme and Saltwater Seafood Company. Bringing the seafood? Ajax Building Corporation, Big Ben, Law Enforcement, Gaines Street Pies. Another shout-out for Gaines Street Pies, they prepared a little over 100 pizzas while they were practically out of power and provided those to our refugees and evacuees, I'd rather say, who came from all over the state and were in our shelters for this past storm. Hotel Duval, the Leon County Sheriff's Office, Prime Meridian Bank, if y'all want to come to this side of me as well, Prime Meridian Bank, IMAX Challenger Learning Center, JCPenney, MAACA Incorporated, Madison Social, Piggly Wiggly Market, Rogers goners bond insurance, Russell Rainey, Sunny's Real Pit BBQ, Super Lou, and Tallahassee Community College. Will you all, please, 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 also the staff, all of our HR staff and who work so diligently administering this program, will y'all please join us up here as well? These are, these are the individuals, the workhorses who helped us grow this program from the piddly fewer, you know, 50 or so we had to where we are today. And I'm not sure if he's in the audience, but Dr. Willie Williams, I like saying that, he just, behind me? Right here, all right. Willie works in our office, in the office of the mayor, started as a fellow's in his second year, and while he's been doing that work, has been principally charged with the development and the growth of the Tallahassee Future Leadership Program, and while doing so, earned his doctorate degree. So he is Dr. Willie Williams. You work for us, so I'm going to say it with emphasis. And I believe you've got a few plaques here that you're prepared to present.
Good evening. We will start off with, and these have just been his partners that actually went above and beyond the call when it came to employing our youth. A lot of them took in five to upwards of 25 youth into their businesses this summer. So we definitely wanted to acknowledge all of our partners for just going above and beyond and being a great part of our community and acknowledging our youth and giving them the skills that they needed. So, Mayor, I would turn it back over to you, and then we just have some plaques for those partners.
Awesome. So I mentioned a couple of these already, but Krispy Kreme, again, for going above and beyond the call of duty. This plaque is presented to you. Florida State University, represented, right here. This plaque goes to y'all. That's a big one. Florida A&amp;M University, right here. And the Tallahassee Leon County Federal Credit Union. I mentioned the work that Gaines Street Pies did in the wake of this last storm, but Lisa over at the Tallahassee Leon County Federal Credit Union also just yesterday took up a collection from this community of goods and services that they're making available for our utility workers who tomorrow morning, after bringing this community all the way back to almost 100% power restoration, our men and women of our utility are going to be getting in their trucks at 6:00 a.m. in the morning and going down South State to provide help in the restoration effort. And Tallahassee Leon County Federal Credit Union provided great collections for her goods and services for them as they go on their way. And I know that Florida A&amp;M University, I believe, is actually the staging ground for FEMA and all of the emergency operations that are coming out of this, being staged out of here and going downstate. So not only are these folks who give so graciously through this program, these are people who give year-round back to our community. So will you join me in appreciation for all of them for their great work? Thank you all again. I will now invite forward, speaking of folks who go above and beyond and who assisted us, they assist us every day, year-round, but played a particularly critical role in the cleanup in the aftermath of this most recent storm. So will the employees, the workers, the dedicated members of the City of Tallahassee team that are in the UU PI Gas Utility, please join me at the podium, under the leadership, obviously, of Mike Tadros, Mr. Stephen Mayfield, and your entire team. All right, I'm pleased to present this proclamation in acknowledgement of you all and your hard work. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas the mission of the City of Tallahassee is to provide excellent services and facilities to support a high quality of life for our community, and whereas the city has provided safe, reliable natural gas services for over 60 years, and whereas natural gas is a clean, cost-effective, and domestically-produced item here in America, which reduces our reliance on foreign oil, and whereas the city's natural gas utility proudly serves over 31,000 businesses, households in Tallahassee, as well as Leon, Waculla, and Gaston Counties, and whereas the city's natural gas utility is the 27th-largest municipally-owned utility in the nation, and whereas each year the American Public Gas Association, also known as APGA, recognizes gas systems with the prestigious APGA Systems Operational Achievement Recognition, also known as SOAR, I'll say that from now on, for excellence in operating in natural gas utility. And whereas out of over 700 APGA members, the city's natural gas utility was selected SOAR Gold Level by its APGA peers based on demonstrated excellence in systems integration, system improvement, employee safety, and workforce development. Furthermore, the city's natural gas utility is the only gas utility in the nation to receive the SOAR Gold Level Recognition Award twice, once in 2014 and most recently 2017. Now, therefore I, Andrew DeGillum, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby accept this prestigious recognition, or rather, you all will accept this prestigious recognition, on behalf of the city of Tallahassee and its gas utility. I just want to mention again, I know I've said enough on this storm, but these folks didn't report any leaks, managed all outage situations, and again, worked overtime to make sure that we were able to get the city back to 100. And so, Mike, you and your team deserve a huge, obviously, acknowledgement for this great national honor, but know that we also appreciate you here locally in the city of Tallahassee for the work that you do every day. Will you join me in appreciation for this great?
Thanks, Mayor. If you'll allow me to introduce the staff with me, I have Bicki O'Neil, Laura Mooney, Marlin Davis, Keith Ash, and Paul Chung, and Michael Tribian. Those are members of the gas utilities. I really do appreciate everything they have done and their passion. I just remember, in 2007, the gas utility had 40 employees. Today, we are 33 full-time employees. Increased number of customers and expanded service territory, and they are two times national champs. There is no words enough to thank them for their dedication and work. I also want to thank all the customers, that they choose our service, and we love them dearly. Today, I was handed this as I was walking in from this crew, that members of the Tallahassee Federal Credit Union stopped by them on Front Street while they were working, checking the valves, and they hand them bags of cookies, and they give them thank you cards for their work during the hurricane. That goes a long way. That's the community we love. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, appointed official, and the executive team, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for your guidance and your support throughout every step we go to get us to this level. In closing, I have nothing to say more than thank you to be a part of this great organization and be living here in this great city of Tallahassee. Thank you.
All right, and last, but certainly not least, I want to invite forward for a presentation from the American Cancer Society, Danielle Capell, to make a brief presentation to the city of Tallahassee. Danielle, you're welcome forward. Another award, yes.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having me this afternoon. I want to just start off by saying thank you to the entire city of Tallahassee. As the mayor mentioned, I am Danielle Capell. I'm the community manager for the Relay for Life, both Relay for Life of Leon, Havana, and North Leon here in Tallahassee. So happy to be here with you guys today and just recognize the incredible work and dedication that went into the City of Tallahassee Relay for Life team this past spring. Our 2017 Relay for Life of Leon, Havana raised nearly $140,000 for the American Cancer Society. And the City of Tallahassee team was responsible for over $18,000 of those dollars. So the city is an incredible partner to us, and we, we very much appreciate the city, the city's Relay for Life team. To make that a little bit more tangible for you, $18,500 could provide 370 nights of lodging for a patient who might have to travel to get their cancer treatment. It could also provide over 1,200 rides to and from treatment through our Road to Recovery Program, and it could also support 925 individuals through our 24-hour 1-800 helpline or our cancer.org website. So that is an incredible, incredible contribution, and we truly do appreciate the city of Tallahassee. I do want to say a very special thank you to Jennifer Porter, who's up here with me today. Jennifer served as the champion for the city's 2017 Relay for Life campaign, and she did an incredible job. She is very passionate and organized and driven, and she, she was spectacular. So I really appreciate you. Thank you. I also want to recognize our top three departments for the 2017 campaign. In first place, we had underground utilities and public infrastructure. So those guys are basically rock stars. And that was led by Jen, who's behind me. I also want to recognize our second-place department, the Customer Operations Team, led by Jake Adams, who's also here today. And then, and third, we had the City Attorney's Office, led by Mike Hammerick. So we appreciate their efforts as well and their contributions. I do also want to give a shout-out to a couple of other departments who contributed in the 2017 campaign, the Procurement Department, Technology and Innovation, Electric, Parks and Rec, Human Resources, and the Department of Financial Management. All of those groups also had leaders who contributed to the fundraising efforts this year. At this time, I would like to present the At this time, I would like to present the super-large trophy here. This trophy signifies that the City of Tallahassee raised at least between $15,000 and $25,000 for the American Cancer Society this year and achieved Sapphire status. So, thank you. Absolutely. And then I also I also have a plaque here to signify that the City of Tallahassee was the top fundraising team for the entire event.
Thank you, Danielle. Thank you all. It's been just a pleasure to be the champion, the city's champion, for Relay for Life this year. It has been a journey. It's been a very interesting summer, as my father is battling cancer himself, so I've been able to see what our contributions can do, what American Cancer Society can do for cancer patients and their families. So I appreciate all your support, and I appreciate Danielle coming to recognize us today. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, while you're coming back to the dais, I want to personally also thank the city employees that went out of their way to give and donate to the American Cancer Society. As many of you know, just a little over a year ago, my wife was diagnosed with breast cancer, and we have, as a family, been through that ordeal for the past year. Thank God that she is on the road to remission. Her surgery was successful, and we, of course, certainly thank God for that, but as a family, we have taken this on as a cause because we too see the services and have benefited from the services that the Cancer Society provides to individuals and families who are going through that ordeal. And so my wife and I have taken this on as a cause as well and are raising money for our local Cancer Society and following in Commissioner Ziffer's footsteps. I am one of the real men, wear pink this year. And we are raising money for the Making Strides Walk, which will be held on the 22nd of October at beautiful Cascades Park. So any of you that want to, again, be a part of that fundraising effort on behalf of the Cancer Society, the walk is on the 22nd, and if you want to go to the makingstrideswalk.org website and support our efforts, each of us that are real men have committed to raising a minimum of $2,500 for the cause, and so we certainly appreciate any support that you all might want to give in that regard as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner, to you and Judge Ashenafi Witcher, and we thank you for your leadership on that. Mr. Manager, we're now at the point in the agenda for citizen input on items that are on the agenda. Treasurer Clerk, are there any speakers?
Yes, Mayor, we have about four speakers. The first will be Mike Brazin, followed by Erwin Jackson. The first speaker is on item 1101, which is Discussion of a City Commission Policy Proposal to Establish a System for Electronic Notification of Citizens. Mr. Brazin, along with other speakers, will have three minutes for their remarks, and there's a light to your left there on the podium that will come on with a green light, and it'll turn yellow and then red when your time's expired.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Mike Brazin. I live at 1401 North Randolph Circle, and as the President of the Benton Hills Neighborhood Association, I've seen firsthand the problems that a lack of early citizen involvement presents to a variety of city projects, the Myras Park Project, the Frenchtown Student Housing, the power generating station near TMH, and now even the ADU ordinance revision. I'm here to request that you develop and implement Commissioner Ziffer's keyword search and early meeting notification process. As the Neighborhood Association President, I've seen what citizens can do to make their neighborhood a better place to live. There's a trend in Benton Hills and in much of Tallahassee in which baby boomers are ready to retire, but also ready to give back to the wonderful life that Tallahassee has provided for us. We bring a strong energy, skills, experience, and a commitment to our voluntary efforts. We're as interested in anyone in making Tallahassee an even more friendly, safe, prosperous, and livable city. We want to work with you, not against you. We want to be involved early and not placated later. Invite us to the table to make that happen. Let's make the keyword search and early meeting notification be that invitation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Erwin Jackson, speaking on item 1102, Approval of Resolution Supporting Home Rule in Florida. He'll be followed by Lisa Brown.
Erwin Jackson, 1341, Jackson, Buff. We tried home rule when citizens voted for referendum establishing an ethics ordinance. The city attorney wrote the policy exempting the city commissioners from this ethics policy. The city Ethics Commission attorney confirmed that the city Ethics Commission is not even authorized to enforce state ethics requirements. Our Ethics Commission has been purposely neutered by the city attorney, Shelley. City attorney Shelley hired a "in-house" ethics officer instead of hiring an independent ethics officer. Julie Keefe conducted an investigation with city manager Fernandez that consisted of a brief conversation, then colluded that Ricky didn't do any violation of any ethics rules. Because of this smooth move, I've started referring to him as Tricky Ricky. Fortunately, the Ethics Commission disagreed with Ms. Keefe's conclusion. I filed an ethics complaint against Tricky Ricky because I had no faith in Ms. Keefe's ability to expose city corruption. Also, Tricky Ricky's attorney argued that the city Ethics Committee had no authority to transfer the complaint to the state Ethics Commission. I filed the complaint to the state at my expense, preventing the city from having to pay excessive legal expenses. I also wanted to expand the complaint to include not only the $5,000 owner's discount given to help Ricky pay for his daughter's wedding from a city contractor, I also wanted to include Ricky created an unadvertised city job for the city contractor's personal friend, and also Ricky asked and received multiple "free" tickets to FSU football games in a private box valued at approximately $10,000 from this same city contractor. Now, he's disagreed and has admitted that, stated he didn't take these, but we have evidence to corroborate what I'm saying. Yet this city commission remains silent, hoping the public will never find out about city corruption. In collusion, I ask this commission, allow the Ethics Commission to write a new ethics ordinance that will finally be able to address the corruption and corruption in City Hall. The need for comprehensive ethics policy is proven by the mere fact that three mayors, our past three mayors of Tallahassee are now being investigated by the FBI, Scott Maddox, John Marks, and Andrew Gillum. Scott and Andrew, before you say anything, you might want to know, and I'm certain you do, that your plane, your hotel rooms, and most conversations during the past couple of years were recorded by the FBI during your trips to Las Vegas and, more recently, New York City. Appreciate it, and look forward to any comments you want to make.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Lisa Brown, speaking on item 1309, which is your storm update. She had marked on agenda, but since it's on the agenda, we'll get you now instead of later in the meeting.
No problem. So I just wanted to, first of all, publicly share our appreciation to the city for their response to the storm issues. Secondly, wanted to make the city aware that our credit union, which is Tallahassee's oldest community-chartered credit union, is providing special loan programs for city and county employees to help them through. We know that for those folks, those first responders and those utility folks, sometimes they kind of get forgotten and set aside, but we're offering special programs for them because we, again, were the original credit union for city and county employees. Thirdly, and we've had some mention made about some of the events that we've been doing to support our utility workers and our first responders, but we wanted to take that a step further and request and offer assistance with an appreciation event, kind of like we did after Hermine. Would like to kind of make that recommendation and also offer our assistance in that type of event. I think it was a really, last year was a great opportunity for citizens to personally thank people that were out there. I think that sometimes that one-on-one human interaction can really improve relations and take us a lot further than just simply that objectifying action that kind of tends to happen when we become uncomfortable from a lack of power and sleep and hot showers and things like that. So those are my comments, and that's all I'd like to say for today. Thank you.
Thank you again, Lisa. Next speaker.
That's the last speaker at this time, Mayor. We do have an additional speaker, but that one will be for the public hearing later in the meeting.
Got it. Thank you. Commissioners, we're now at the point of the consent agenda.
Move Consent.
There's a motion and a second to approve consent. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. We're now on item 11.01. City Commissioner Ziffer.
Thank you, Mayor. Through one of the emails that I received from the League of Cities a couple of months ago, the City of Miami Beach had a group of very active citizens that inquired about being informed on an earlier basis of agenda items that were coming before the city, so this is not my idea, this has been done elsewhere, but it seems to be successful up to this point. It's essentially tasking Jim Cook with, working with our computer folks to provide an opportunity for anyone, whether it's a neighborhood person, or it's a businessperson, or it's just a homeowner, anybody that wants to, can go on to talgov.com and type in one keyword or 100 keywords, doesn't matter. If they wanted to type in Benton Hills, they could type in Benton Hills. If they wanted to type in Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce, they could do that. And anytime their words came up in an agenda item for either CRA blueprint or the Tallahassee City Commission on Board Docs, they would receive an automatic notification via email that this item is on the agenda so they could take a look at it. I think it's an easy thing for us to do. It gives people the opportunity to see what's going on in their government if they're concerned, and it removes on some level the discussion we've had from several folks that they weren't told or they weren't informed. We want them to be informed. We want to get that information out, so this seems to be the best way. The other thing is, and I'm going to ask Karen if she would, and I think you guys are already probably working on this, and that is work with the neighborhoods and other interested parties to find out how we can notify them even in advance of that so that they can be participating in the conversation well in advance. You and I did that when we had the revisions of the signed ordinance. It worked out very well because there was agreement before it even came to us among the different players. So this is just a way for our government to be as transparent as we possibly can, and that's why I brought it forward.
Great. Commissioner Miller.
First of all, thank you, Commissioner Ziffer, for bringing this up. I think it's a great idea, and I'd like to make a motion to the effect that we, as we are recommended to direct staff to develop the policy and the system that goes to support this.
There's a motion and a second.
Right. I also wanted to say that some of the examples that Mr. Brazin gave wouldn't have come up if it were just those few meetings that you mentioned, and I'm wondering if this will include DRC meetings and Planning Commission, for example, because especially Planning Commission, I think that would be very important, but then they'll begin to pick up on some things that might not be coming before us. I mean, the stadium comes to mind, the standard, I'm sorry, too many S projects.
Yes.
The standard comes to mind because until that reached the point of involving a city property, that was a private endeavor, so I just wanted to know if that was your intention.
As of now, we're dealing with Board Docs. I'm not sure where the Planning Commission agendas are and some of the other entities the Commissioner mentioned. CRTPA is on, I think, Board Docs, so that would be on there.
Right.
We'll follow up with all of the various entities and touch base with each of you, make sure we've got all the bases covered.
All right, thank you.
Great. Commissioners, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 11.02, Commissioner Ziffer.
Commissioners, and I appreciate, I know Commissioner Miller, you were there, and Commissioner Maddox was there. The Florida League of Cities, every year, the president has the opportunity to have priority. This year, my priority is cities throughout the state of Florida doing a better job of advocating home rule to our legislature. There are efforts being made, and last year, we really saw several of them come to head where there is a real effort to remove our ability to make our cities different. People move to different cities for a different flavor, for a different way of life. That's what we do. That's what home rule is, and so we're going to have a far greater effort before our legislature to remind them of that, that local government is the very basis of democracy as we know it, people having the opportunity for self-rule. That's what we do. And quite frankly, as we look around what's happening in our state right now, FEMA is doing a great job, and I'll give credit to the governor, he did a good job communicating, but it's cities that are helping solving the problems of folks on the ground. This city, while our storm was not as great as we anticipated, it was this city that was out through our utility, in our shelters, and everywhere else where we had issues delivering the services to our citizens. That's what we do, and we do it better than anybody else. So I'm just asking us to pass this resolution. We're doing it all throughout the state, 412 cities will hopefully be doing this and supporting. I've got Magnus for all you all. Hashtag Let Cities Work, that's our slogan this year, and we want to just get the word out, so passing this resolution, which I will move, would be helpful towards that.
That's great. Commissioner Miller.
Well, again, thank you. You know, I don't think people are aware of it, but cities are fighting for their lives with our legislature. I've actually heard one of the leadership express the opinion that he didn't see a need for city government and that they could handle the zoning and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera at the legislature every, in 60 days for the whole state. I thought that they might not know what they were asking for, but fact is that they don't believe that cities are necessary because they weren't stated in the Constitution. And what I'd like to add is that if you study world history, cities preceded states and nations. Those came afterward. The world organized itself as it began to civilize, people formed cities. So the cities are the basis of governing and of organizing into a civilized society, and that's basically what we're up against, trying to carry that message to the legislature and explain to them that we do a tremendous amount of work that I don't think they would be very excited to do. So thank you for bringing the resolution forward.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner, I just want to join in complimenting you as this being a huge part of your agenda this year. I get why legislatures want to concentrate more power, and the lobbyists who come before them, it's much easier to talk to 140 and 160 of them than to go around and convince every city and county that what they're trying to do is in our best interest. So whatever we can do to be supportive, 1,000% behind it.
Thank you, Mayor. I know you've been a big proponent of home rule for some time now, and I know you have been traveling the state talking about it, so thank you very much.
Indeed. Commissioners, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioners, we're now into introduction of ordinances. Mr. Attorney.
Mayor, Commissioner, we have four ordinances to introduce tonight. Item number 12.01 is ordinance number 17-0-27. The first and only public hearing on this ordinance will be scheduled for September 27 at 6:00 PM in these chambers. The title of the ordinance is an Ordinance of the City of Tallahassee Adopting a Small-Scale Amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comp Plan Providing for Separability and Conflicts. This item deals with a comp plan change with the old Willis Dairy property. Item number 12.02 is ordinance number 17-Z-26. The first and only public hearing for this ordinance is also scheduled for September 27, 2017. 2017, at 6:00 PM in these changes, in these chambers. The title of that ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating including additional territory and in, in central core with historical preservation overlay on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee. It also deals with the old city waterworks property that has been a point of discussion before this commission for a number of times. Item number 12.03 is ordinance number 17-Z-28. The first and only public hearing for this zoning change will be September 27 at 6:00 PM in these commission chambers. The title of this ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating including additional territory as an end PUD, that is Planning Unit Development on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee. This particular zoning change is also in reference to the old Willis Dairy zoning change to a PUD. Finally, item number 12.04 is ordinance number 17-Z-29. The first and only public hearing for this ordinance will be also on September 27 at 6:00 PM in these chambers. The title of that ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating including additional territory as an end commercial parkway, that is CP, on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee. This particular zoning change deals with fire station number 16 and changing the remaining property, part of that PUD, to CP. Mayor, if we could have these four items deemed admitted.
Yes, without objection. Those items are introduced. Mr. Manager, you requested item, item 13.09 be moved first in policy formation. So I'll hand it over to you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Item 13.09 is update on Hurricane Irma. And overnight, last night, your, your city utilities, electric utilities met the definition of the governor of being fully restored, thus at a 98% level. And we're gonna give you an update by your executive team, but I'm thankful for the, the planning that went into this endeavor, and I think overall, the execution was, was done very well by not only your staff, but the community as a whole. I think we owe a big thanks to the community for their planning. I sort of sensed a different approach this year, leading up to the storm, and the amount of preparation by, by the community and our partners. I think Leon County, the EOC, and everyone that participated in, in the endeavor stepped up to the plate, and there was great cooperation and communications. So now that we are virtually done, we, we should be 100% complete of anything that we can put back by this evening, we will move on to help others. So our water and sewer crews are already on their way to Daytona Beach, I believe they left this morning, and our electric crews will be, and our, and our mutual aid partners that came to see us from Nebraska, Ohio, and Lafayette, Louisiana, will, will depart in the morning at 6:00 AM to go help. We don't know exactly where they're gonna go, but based on our mutual aid agreements, they could go help FPNL, because as you know, they've, they've, they've received a lot of damage, and they're having trouble restoring the, the service. So we may go there, you know, FPNL, or TECO, Duke, they all have major, major areas to restore. More likely, we, through our FMEA partners, we will go to a public utility. But we will find that out later today. I don't think it's definite at this point, but they will be departing from Jackson Bluff at 6:00 in the morning. So Commissioners, and Mr. Mayor, if you wanna go out there and say goodbye, it'll be at 6:00 in the morning. Our crews will be departing from there. Our partners will probably be departing from their hotels, I would guess. So with that, I'd like to ask Ms. Barber to talk about different portions of, of the planning and execution of this, and the rest of the executive team. Ms. Barber?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, and appointed officials. I appreciate the opportunity to come today to provide you an update on what our responsibilities were for community engagement and public safety, and again, to thank you for your continued support in this regard, and your really insistence that we work harder to engage and educate and inform the public about preparing for these emergencies and making sure our organization was ready. I'm here to report that the efforts that we put in to encourage our citizens to prepare have been successful. We encouraged them to take personal responsibility for themselves and their families, as well as for their neighborhoods. And based on information that we received directly from our customers, as well as what we observed, they actually took heed and did, I think, a fantastic job. Our citizens face outages as they always do, but what we found is that the, when they called in about outages, or when they talked to us about it, they were posting on social media, they were making reports that they were without power, but they were prepared. And so we were very excited to hear that. So we, the desperation, the anxiety about the outage, the edge was taken off because people were more prepared. So we think that we've reached some level of success in that. We learned some things during Hermine. We've learned some things from Irma, and we will continue to work on this process to tighten what we do internally, and as well to tighten what we are able to help our citizens with. The neighborhood approach has been extremely successful, not only with prep, with our emergency prep, but with other aspects. But today, I wanna talk about the, the emergency preparation piece. Many of you were involved last week in the meeting that we held over in, at the Walk of Forward for Neighborhood Leaders. Wanted to have one more round of meeting with them, because we had had a meeting earlier in the year for emergency prep for neighborhoods. We participated in a community-wide bucket event. Then we held a more localized event for neighborhood leaders, and we had over 80 neighborhood leaders to participate. We had several communities to hold their own bu, build a bucket events, and to start the process of evaluating their neighborhoods for their, for the vulnerabilities, the strength, the challenges that they would face in an emergency. So what we wanted to do last week is pull them back together to say, even if you haven't gotten as far with your formal plan, here are five, six, seven things you need to know as neighborhood leaders, that we want you to take back use for your own families, but also to take this information and strengthen your neighborhoods. We followed that meeting up with information, written information to each of the neighborhood leaders. Then we also reached out to them to let them know, make sure we had the direct contact information, let them know that we'd be in touch with them immediately following the storm, to determine what type of special needs they may have had in their communities. So those are, those are three things that we did to address neighborhood-like issues. When we started this process, we had three basic components that we were trying to address. We wanted to say that we, as an organization, were prepared. We wanted to say to our, our citizens that you needed to be prepared individually, as families, and as neighborhoods. And then we also said, let's take responsibility for our neighbors who can't help themselves. And we found that in doing this, we created this group of ambassadors. So we were not the only ones delivering the message of preparedness. They were also doing it. And if you were monitoring social media, you may have seen a number of posts where people were adding information on what they were doing and sharing it with others, and folks say, hey, that's a great idea, I think I'll do that, too. So we believe that that all paid off. We had a number of, of other activities that we had indicated back after Hermine, and the year updated during May, that we would do to try to be better prepared. So I wanted to report on a couple of those things. And this is a huge report, but it is a 24 font, because of my vision, but, and, and my peers are waiting. So I won't go over all of it, but I will highlight just a few of them. One of the things we talked about is that we know that the utilities are essential staff for the storms. We wanted to create a bank of supplemental staff who normally would not have storm-related duties. We did that. We have nearly 400 employees who are, were available and who worked to assist with the various functions in the areas ranging from resources to recovery, to communication, to citizen care. We also supported the shelter function with over 50 employees who received shelter training and actually worked in the, in the shelters. We prepared in the CDA for, number one, I think sometimes we forget the importance of preparing our employees, making sure that they are ready to leave their families. They often have to do that with very little notice. So one, some of the feedback we received in our post-assessment last time was that we needed to spend a little more effort on that. We sent out a, a notice, it's called an iris notice, to our employees to make sure they had a checklist of what they needed to take care of for their families, so that once they came to work, they could be focused more on those issues, including providing lodging for them while they were there. We received over 3,000 calls in the CDA during that, during the active part of the event. We had a pre-storm prep work for, by the police department, where we shifted to Alpha Bravo schedules to enhance and increase the number of staff that we had available during the storm. All of our staff were involved, all the TPD's personnel were involved in either patrol operations, served as floaters, or backfill certain positions. We had traffic patrol, critical infrastructure and anti-looting activities, community liaisons, curfew monitoring, which we're proud to report we had no major issues with. That was new for us, so we were glad that that went well. And there again, in the police department, a process they call INREACH, where we work to make sure we have support for our staff who may have had losses in their own families. And if we knew of particular situations, we worked closely with them to monitor what was happening, to make sure we provided resources to them as well. In our fire, our fire services area, who also handles security and our, coordinate our efforts in the EOC, we worked on showing up the staffing from city, from the city staff in the EOC, provided training to that, to the staff in the EOC, made sure all of our buildings were secured, and we provided security to our friends and neighbors who, friends and coworkers who were utilizing mess or fill, because of the number of vehi, vehicles there, the number of people there. We provided security because they had a lot of equipment that was stored over there. We handled over 1,600 calls from TPD during our first night of the storm, and then we had over 800 for this, for our recovery so far. We're still in a state of recovery, so we don't know what those numbers might look like. And lastly, what I wanted to talk about is the, of the effort of our Parks and Rec Department to prepare all of our facilities, to make sure everything was anchored down, to make sure we could open our conference stations as quickly as we could following the storm. And we did that yesterday. You see some of the pictures of the youth that were involved in the conference stations. We opened our fire stations and provided water and services there. The fire department volunteered along with a number of other staff who were assigned through our supplemental staffing group. We also had areas available for showers in the event that we had citizens who needed that, and we are getting calls today from folks, whether they're county or city customers who are just calling, asking for information and assistance. So we're still providing that service. And we manned up for our USAR, our Urban Search and Rescue. We, we had 25 people assigned for that. In the event they may get called up, or they may get utilized here in the city, and they were placed on a green, green light list, which means that we could have been called up, and we may still be called up to assist. So we stand ready to do that. And that's the gist of my area of responsibility.
Thank you.
Thank you. Big thank you. You know, this has been so different than last year. I mean, it was such a learning experience, and all the work that went into reevaluating how the last storm played out has been put into place. So I mean, I can't tell you how impressed I am with all of the, the, everything that you all have thought of, you, the county, the sheriff's department, the police, the fire, everyone working together. It has really been impressive to help, and I think the community had a much, a much more comfort level this time than last time, as far as how prepared the city was.
Thank you. Thank you, Cynthia, for your report. And Cynthia talked a lot about making sure that the community was ready and that the, and our citizens were prepared for the storm, but, and her team did an outstanding job at that. From our end, we needed to make sure that our city facilities were ready for the storm. So our facilities management team worked hard coordinating with the other departments to make sure that their facilities were taken care of in, in preparation for the storm. And then we made sure that City Hall, Gemini Building, and Renaissance Building were taken care of right before the storm, specifically because those facilities were gonna have employees during the storm. Gemini Building has a call center there, they were working. City Hall has a technology and infrastructure group that were working. So not only making sure that the facilities were ready for them, but that we had staff on hand in case something happened in, in these facilities. In addition to that, we were making sure that our departments had the necessary resources to address issues related to the storm. So like we do every time there's a storm approaching, we set up projects with funding so the departments can charge and track the expenses related to the, to the storm. We also worked with our departments to ensure that they had plenty P-card availability and credit availability. If they needed to increase that, we work with them, just to make sure that departments and the crews, if they needed supplies and materials, they can go purchase that with the P-cards. I think one of the continuing themes that you're gonna hear this evening relates how city staff stepped up to the plate and helped in whatever areas they needed, we needed help in. And a lot of our staff took on non-traditional roles from their regular duties. We had a lot of staff working Red Cross shelters. After a call came out for a need to staff those shelters, working with Cynthia, we got an additional 50 folks to come out and assist with those shelters. So our employees really came up and, and, and did a great job. Our biggest role will be in the coming weeks as we deal with FEMA, and we start to ensure that we maximize reimbursement for eligible expenses in accordance with FEMA policies and procedures. For the major disaster declaration for Hurricane Irma that was issued on September 4th, actually, all 67 counties in the state of Florida are eligible for public assistance if they meet the established thresholds. And we don't think that's gonna be a problem in Leon County. The threshold that was established is approximately $994,000, so just under $1 million. To give you a little perspective, we talked to the electric utility, and they've indicated that very preliminary estimates for restoration of the electric system is about $1.5 million to $2 million. So the threshold for Leon County is for all agencies, so Leon County, school board, the universities, and the city. So we're pretty confident that we'll meet that threshold. Solid waste crews are out assessing the amount of debris yesterday, and we should have some preliminary estimates on the cost of that in the next couple of days. One of the things that the declaration includes is a new reimbursement, a change in the way that, a percentage for eligible reimbursement. So any expenses within the next 30 days for emergency protective measures will be authorized to be reimbursed up to 100% if eligible. So we're working to make sure that we maximize that. The other categories are gonna be reimbursed at 75% to 85%, which is what it's been historically. But there is a possibility to get reimbursed up to 100% for certain eligible expenses. So we're working with our departments, our partners, to make sure that we are tracking all our expenses, documenting all our expenses, and as required by FEMA, so we can try to get as much reimbursement as possible. Although we did qualify for public assistance, we're pretty sure that there's not gonna be any individual assistance through FEMA, and we're working through those issues with FEMA, but we're pretty confident that that's not gonna happen. At this time, let me ask Wayne to come up and talk about his area.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As our theme was prepare, respond, restore, the growth management department started working on, on the front side of the storm as it was approaching for the preparation aspect, as what was gonna happen when the issues were trying to get the power from the street to the homes and the businesses. What the growth management department, electric department developed was a process where the quick connects could be inspected by the, the electric folks that are on, on site at, at the time, not requiring a growth management staff to go out there and inspect each individual site. That significantly reduces the amount of time to get people up and running on individual properties. Our growth management director also reached out across to the county growth management director to make sure that those services inside and outside of the city limits were being processed the same way throughout our community. In addition, your growth management director reached out to all of the electric providers in our community to make sure that they knew that process- in our community to make sure that they knew that process, so that everyone was working in sync, hand in hand, to get people up and running as fast as possible. What we also learned was that our development services and economic vitality group can do a lot more than build our community. We had staff from OEV Planning, Real Estate, the CRA Growth Management, all supporting functions of the Emergency Operations Center through the planning section and the operations group. The planning section, basically their job is to assemble all those reports from everyone else and make sure that those reports are sent out, and everyone's working from the same pieces of information. Your operations folks, donations were coming in for certain things, making sure that those logistics were identified, where did those donations go to in the appropriate location. So, we had a wealth of staff attending those operations and just stepping up, as all the staff before me had indicated. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Reese, and we'll talk about the restoration.
Thank you, Wayne. Mr. Manager, Commissioners, I'll be brief. I just wanted to hit some highlights of what we saw. I think this all is very much ingrained in the last few days and the experience we've all had, and I'd like to just take a moment just to say thanks to all the men and women that really did all this hard work, and some are still out there working right now, putting it all together. There's too many people for me to even attempt to say thanks to, but I just want to say that from my point of view, they really did a good job. Good coordination, I think you've heard that theme. There was a lot of good preparation. I'll share some facts with you. The electric group, for example, about eight to ten days before the storm, when Irma was coming through the Atlantic, and it seemed like it was coming our way, started reaching out for mutual aid, which became very scarce quickly because the whole southeast potentially was going to be impacted. So, utilities started reserving those forces, and we had to reach as far as Nebraska and Ohio to get help and make sure that was a firm commitment. We had contingent commitments that ultimately we didn't need. So, that was a good thing, very much ready, very much looking ahead. They did not wait till the last minute to secure those resources. As you know, we put out sandbags, and the community responded strongly to that. We dispensed about ninety thousand sandbags, a really unbelievable amounts of the community was prepared. I think that was an indicator of that. We advanced thirty portable generators at intersections around the community, key intersections, just in anticipation we would lose the power so we can make sure the community was safe, especially in those four-lane, six-lane highway intersections. And we connected with our critical customers, our nursing homes, our assisted living facilities, our universities, hospitals, a number of folks, and made sure they had our contact information, made sure that we were going to keep an open line of communication so that they had situational awareness, they could be prepared, and as well as after the storm, we could keep them up to date. That worked very, very well, I think. We were pleased with that, and I believe those key contacts were pleased with that. Ultimately, the storm came. I think it spared us the very worst that we had feared on Sunday morning, but it did deal us a blow. There was about three hundred trees that were down in our roads and right-ofways during the duration of the storm. A hundred and seventy-seven roads were closed. We lost electricity to half our water wells, approximately half of our water wells, and approximately half of our sewer lift stations, which presents a dilemma to keep that system pressurized and to keep the wastewater flowing. Mike Tadros and his team did a great job. It almost seems too easy, frankly, when this happens. They really answered the bell. They did it again, they did it during Hermine, they did it again. We had two minor incidents that did not even rise to the level of a reporting incident, but where we had some spill, and that was when you lose power to those kind of facilities. So, that, all in all, that worked really well. In total, we had about fifty-six thousand customers lose electricity during the duration of the storm, and that began about nightfall on Sunday. So, this is a pretty long storm in terms of the hours it impacted us. So, we began losing power, but the winds were not at a level where our workers had to stop, and they continued on. The weather was nasty, the wind was not quite at its threshold yet. They continued to work until about five o'clock the next morning, and they restored eleven thousand customers during that period. So, some customers went off, and we got them back on. Unfortunately, we lost some of those, and we had to get them back on again, and they just kept at it. There was no discouragement. They kept at it. In fact, I think they were very reluctant to pull back when we finally made them, when the winds got too high around five o'clock that morning. We sheltered in place until about one o'clock, and then it was, I'll be honest with you, it was like holding back a herd of horses that were anxious to get out and work, and I think we saw those results. So, they literally ran out to the field. I'm glad TPD wasn't issuing speeding tickets. We might have gotten a few. And I joke, but it was really, really encouraging and heartwarming to see them go out that fast. And so, they went out there ahead of schedule. We thought that would be later, almost to the dark hours of Monday, the storm passed. We got out there about one o'clock. In between one o'clock on Monday and five AM on Tuesday, ninety-five percent of our customers had electricity. At the single greatest point of outages, we had about forty-five thousand outages at one time during the duration, about fifty-six thousand customers lost power. So, we made rapid progress. There's a chart that you can see that I'll walk through for a moment. It gives some indication of when you have a large-scale event like this, how the duration or the restoration process happens, and what speed in which you can expect that to occur. The Florida Municipal Electric Association put this together last year in 2016, and it benchmarked against some other storms. And some of these storms are from 2004, 2005. If you remember, there was no hurricane in the state of Florida for a number of years prior to Hermine last year. And what you find is the early days of restoration, you'll get big chunks, ten and twenty and twenty-five percent of the customers that you lost power to, you'll restore that power, and then that work becomes more and more difficult. So, if you look at the chart, I'll walk you through it for a moment. At the very top left, that's when you have all of the customers out that you've experienced from the storm. So, every one of them is at a hundred percent of those customers out. So, these are tens of thousands of customers out. There are a number of storms, some Florida storms, Hurricane Sandy, and there's a storm that Isaac, I believe, that impacted Louisiana. What you see is it's a long process. In fact, you see two of the storms, it was Francis and Wilma, that were not completed, restoration was not completed in twelve days. They were close, but they weren't completed. I think we're going to see some of that in parts of Florida. That's the track we're on. During Hermine, we made good progress in comparison, that's on the leftmost side of your scale. It's kind of a grayish color on the picture you see. At nightfall on Monday, Labor Day, and this is fresh in our minds, we had about ninety percent of our customers in service. So, we had slogged through Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and got to about ninety percent restored. In contrast, what we just saw with Hurricane Irma, literally overnight, we were able to get to ninety-five percent restored. Now, we had tens of thousands of customers out. We did not have quite as many out as we had during Hermine, which if I recall right, was around eighty thousand, but we were in that neighborhood. Some of it circumstantial, some of it, we got a little lucky with some of the trees and the lack of broken poles, but we had some, you can see them in the pictures. And I think it was just a really good coordinated effort, and some of the things that we put in place, in particular as we evaluated our infrastructure, our switching, just our entire approach, I think we saw a lot of benefit from that effort over the last year. So, you see that really good gain and very rapid restoration that we experienced, and we all saw that. I was very proud of that. I know that was well done by the electric folks. I'd also like to say, as we shift forward, we began solid waste collection yesterday, normal operation. We began the airport operation, and we are already collecting storm debris. So, the solid waste crew, they will work through Sunday. They missed two days, they'll work through Sunday. They'll begin right back at it Monday, moving from our red week to blue week schedule. So, we already have the schedule built in. We'll augment the staff as necessary to stay on that schedule. So, our customers will be familiar with it, we'll communicate with them on that. So, as they're cleaning their yards, and we're trying to get the right-ofway clear, that started right away. We're not waiting. We're not announcing that and waiting and staging, we're moving forward right away. And it role is mentioned that we will, even though we're going to do a lot of self-performance, we'll make sure we do it in a way where we preserve our ability to get FEMA funding. And so, that's my update. With that, I think probably one of the things that was a highlight of what we did, I think it really shined a bright star of what was going on with the community. It helped engage that. It's Alice Saffaris, she's going to give us an update on our communications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reese.
Thank you, Reese. Mayor, city commissioners, as you will remember, after Hurricane Hermine, we got a lot of feedback about our communications efforts. Well, we listened, and from that, we learned a lot of things, and we implemented a strategy to provide information to citizens this go-around that was timely and effective and delivered in a variety of ways. So, I just want to highlight a couple of those efforts. We utilized our website, which was designed for this kind of event. It allowed us to post information on the homepage so that citizens didn't have to navigate or search for it. It was right there in front of them where they needed to see it. That website received eighty-one percent more traffic as the hurricane approached than it does typically. We intensified direct outreach using social media. We used Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and we customized a hashtag so that people could follow the conversation. We generated timely and ongoing text alerts, email, we used our television station and radio. Speaking of radio, we worked very closely with our media partners. We appreciate WFSU being in the EOC. They provided timely broadcast, live, ongoing during the height of the storm. We anticipated the type of information that people wanted with a goal of getting it to them before they asked. We took a very proactive approach. We delivered a steady flow of information that was timed with the storm's approach, sharing what was happening around the state as it got closer to us. The closer the hurricane got to us, the higher the frequency of information that we communicated. I can't understate the amount of difference that the teamwork approach had in this effort. We coordinated with the chamber, I know Sue's here, in advance of the storm. We also coordinated with Leon County Schools and Leon County Government to share one another's information. We expanded our communications team to include folks from other departments that helped us in responding to citizens on social media. They responded twenty-four hours a day during the event, and our social media traffic, the information that we were putting out on social media platforms, we increased that by more than a thousand percent when you compare it to a typical day. Also, we utilized photos that were contributed by city employees. I know that you received an email, as did all of the city employees, from our city manager. We set up a photo, our Dropbox, to share photos, and then we were able to put those out on social media and provide them to our traditional media partners. We collaborated with technology innovation team to provide updated outage map, and we added a restoration map to the mix. So, it allowed customers to see where work was happening as it was happening. Additionally, TI, they created maps that people could easily find our sandbag locations, comfort stations, and where water was available. Again, that was displayed on our website on the homepage. We worked with our customer operations team to achieve consistent messaging, so if you called the call center, or you looked on Twitter, you got the same information. As Cynthia mentioned earlier, we worked with our neighborhood groups. They were wonderful, wonderful city ambassadors. So, we delivered information to them, and then they helped disseminate it to their neighbors, which was critical. I'd like to thank them for doing that. We armed them with the information, and then they knew what to do with it, which was vital. I'd also like to thank the communications team, our digital team, our public information officers. They were there, they had a plan, and I think they executed it very well. With that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Turn it over to the mayor.
Well, there's more.
That's the end of the comments.
That's it. Okay, well, very little to add other than excellent. Excellent on behalf of each and every one of you, your respective departments, and everyone who worked within those departments. Honestly, being able to watch you all handle this, you know, eye to eye, face to face, I could not have been more impressed by the way in which you all demonstrated teamwork and collaboration. And although not mentioned much, you know, so far today, including the work with your county colleagues, I saw a tremendous amount of cooperation there. The other thing that I think we didn't account for yet was the amount, the thousands of people who we played shelter to. The fact that because of the number and the volume of evacuations that took place all over this state, every single day, the folks who were monitoring hotel stays were reporting out they're at max capacity. We went from, I don't know, three or so shelters during Hermine to over eleven public shelters this time that housed folks from all over the state. I should also mention, I got notes from people who went over to Louisiana and asked if we could send notes of resolution to Louisiana and over to cities in Alabama for the hosting role that they played for people who came from here and went there. But I mean, it was literally all hands on deck, and I think Tallahassee's true spirit was on full display, best evidenced by the professionalism that each of you showed. And Mr. Manager, kudos to you for leading the entire team. Very, very, very impressed, and I think our community felt the same way. So, thank you, and again, kudos to you. Commissioner.
Just, I think all of us want to give thanks. It was a total team effort, but not only clearly of our linemen and folks in Parks and Rec, and police, and fire, and everybody else, but I want to thank the people and the citizens and the neighbors of Tallahassee. This was different. It was completely different than Hermine. All you had to do was go to a store, and you saw people taking out their pocketbooks and their purses and their wallets, and they were getting prepared. They didn't want to be caught off guard. But everybody had such a positive attitude about it. And I know, I can't speak for any of you because we've not had this conversation, but the emails that I got, and the text messages, and the Facebook posts, and the tweets, for the most part, ninety-nine percent, was, "We appreciate everything that you're doing." They were far more patient, we were far more prepared. Clearly, this was not the storm we had before, but the plan and its implementation was just fantastic. So, to all of our leadership team, and every single person, all the way down to any individual that was involved in this from a city standpoint, but also to our friends and neighbors, thank you for such a great job. I think we showed, not only the state but the country, what we can really do when we work hard at it. So, thank you.
Commissioner.
I just want to echo, Mr. Mayor, that from the folks at the EOC, to our county counterparts, the sheriff, our hospitals, Leon County School District, everybody worked in concert, and I think that we showed that we're the model now for being there immediately for restoration. We learned lessons from Hermine, and no one is perfect, and this government learned some lessons as to what we can improve, and we didn't sit on our heels and just wait. We started those preparations, and I mean, we did build the bucket before there was ever a named storm out there, and it really showed this time. When what Mr. Goad was mentioning about the trucks raring to get out, they were rolling on the streets. I saw them, I mean, while the winds were still going. They were out there wanting to get out and wanting to help people and get their power restored. Our communications has been a thousand times better. So, I'm just, can't be prouder of the work that folks have done in putting their lives on the line just to ensure not only our safety but our comfort. Our emergency management personnel, I saw firefighters and police officers working during the storm. So, we've got an awful lot to be proud of here.
Honestly, enough can't be said. I think this shares, everyone shares a sentiment about how proud we are of all of you and how impressed everyone was, not only of the city, the staff, but also the cooperation with the other, all the other governments, including the schools. I don't know if people are aware of it, but the schools were open to shelters, and one of the reasons they needed a couple extra days was basically to even restore the food supplies in the schools because they were feeding people there. So, that's just part of the picture of everybody being on board in the community, from the people to all the way up to the management and the various organizations. I wanted to give a particular shout-out to the utilities, not only electric. We all focus on electric because that's what we lose. You know, the lines are above ground, they're susceptible to all of our beautiful trees, and this time, the crews were absolutely amazing in their response. I don't know how you all did it. I don't know how you all did it. I mean, the way you had people, the minute somebody would be out, even prior to the storm, they were fixed, they were fixed, they were fixed. The fact that you went around and picked up all the debris that was collected on the side of the roads before the storm by people just doing their yard work, just to get that all out of the way, the preparation this time was just amazing. The fact that we'd never lost water and sewer has always impressed me last year and also this time, too. And if I could give one shout out to the gas company, when you've got water and you've got gas, hot water, you have hot water in your house. And if there is no other reason to get a gas, everything, gas dryer, gas water heater, gas stove, I mean, these, those utilities are staying intact. I mean, we're really keeping them going. And that hot shower is more, it makes it a lot easier to tolerate when you don't have any power if you've got some hot water. So, big shout out to them. And thank you for the information about the debris removal. I know that a lot of people have questions about that now that we're on the other side. And, you know, some of the streets I've been down are literally canyons of debris where it's just everyone's taken it, the opportunity in this last couple of days to put all of it, to clean up their yards and get all those twigs piled into big stacks along the side of the road. So, so much better. I hope that you're planning to write all this down in a document, mainly because you have established a stellar emergency response plan. This can be applied, no matter what the emergency, but in particular with hurricanes, and this can be shared with others so they don't have to figure it out as they go, the way we kind of did last year with Hermine. So hopefully, you'll be doing that because it's an incredibly valuable list of all of these little details that you thought about. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Not much that I can add, other than thank you from a grateful citizenry to all of those that were a part of this team effort that made this a more bearable event for all of us. I also did want to thank a number of our business partners, the Tallahassee Democrat, for the fact that they took down their wall so that their online version of the paper was free to anyone with internet, and they could get up-to-date news on what was going on. Comcast and Xfinity made their mobile hotspots available to individuals throughout the community. Of course, as we mentioned earlier, Gaines Street Pies and all of the businesses that provided food and water for the shelters. This was just a team effort all the way around. Second Harvest and the work that they did in delivering food, certainly want to give them a thanks, but this was just a team effort, it was a community effort, and it certainly speaks to why all of us have chosen to make Tallahassee our home and the community that we love and have made it the all-America city that she is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Really, you should avoid calling people out because there's always so many.
I know.
Not you, but you've inspired me to just really quickly, WTXL and WCTV, eighty-eight point nine, we mentioned earlier, went wall-to-wall coverage, giving people very timely and up-to-date information. Commissioner Richardson, you mentioned some of the local businesses. Having visited, I think, all eleven of the shelters, I cannot say enough of the citizens who showed up with blankets and pillows and what can I do to help? And the Child's Center particularly had a huge representation of folks from South Florida, many of them Spanish-speaking. And the volunteers who worked the shelter, many of them didn't, actually, none of them spoke Spanish. A twelve-year-old got up in the middle of the room and basically did translation for our folks given instructions in the room. Obviously, you called out some of the local businesses. Almost all of them, without charging us, showed up with meals and nearly stocked every one of our shelters with timely meals and timely deliveries. And then finally, Mr. Manager, and we said this already, these folks are about to do it again. They're leaving at six AM in the morning. Our utility workers to now do for others what others have done for us, and we couldn't be more appreciative for that. So I think we'll hand it back over to you, Mr. Manager.
Just one item, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, so, working with our partners of the county, we're planning next week to sort of repeat in a more concentrated scale, going out to the community and listening to their recommendations and their suggestions, how we can do things better. So we're coordinating the schedule. We believe now, Monday and Thursday, and looking at our schedule, I think that's what works for us. We're working with the county administrator to see whether we can make that happen and pick a couple of locations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Salvation Army, Red Cross. Okay, I'm done listing, but couldn't leave those two out. Commissioners, we're now on to, back up to our policy formation, item thirteen point zero one.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, the Tallahassee International Airport is required by federal regulations to provide airport security systems, methods, and procedures to protect the travel in public. Due to the highly complex nature of security access controls and camera surveillance integration required to complete this project, we received one bid from Cook Brothers, Inc., who will be working with trained and qualified personnel from Siemens Security Solutions to complete the project. This agenda item seeks your approval of a contract award and a five percent project contingency to Cook Brothers, Inc., in order to provide for needed airport security improvements at the airport.
Move option one.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for option one. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item thirteen point zero two.
Yes, sir. This is a timely item. It's community resiliency in the face of acute environmental shocks and chronic public stresses is the key priority and the demand for a strategy to weather these events is of continuous importance. Your direction to develop a comprehensive community plan during the city commission workshop this past January reflects your priorities. City staff have solicited and evaluated vendor proposals to develop a resiliency strategy. This effort will identify community threats, resources, and vulnerabilities, and prioritize steps to prepare for and recover from shocks our community will face. City staff have reviewed proposals and ranked each vendor response. Upon your approval of the rankings and authorization to negotiate a contract with the highest-ranked vendor, staff will move forward with the development of the plan.
Move option one.
Second.
Mr. Manager, Commissioners, I am a big, big, big proponent of resiliency. I was a little bit surprised at the price associated with this, and I, given the fact that we have just gone through this storm, and I know there'll be an after-action report, and I also understand that the nature of this is more expansive than just storm events. It's sort of the changing nature of threats. I would be interested in hearing whether or not the manager has any other recommendations for potential staff committee, potential engagement with the university partners. I don't want to cheapen or underestimate the intensity of the work that's required here, but I'm actually interested on whether or not you all have potentially contemplated another way of accomplishing this goal.
Sir, we had discussions on a variety of approaches, and as a group, I think Ms. Barbara, Mr. Doolin, and Chief Gaines, we opted for the RFP proposal. I mean, there are other ways to do it through the university, but I think we were looking at a more comprehensive view of all the threats to our community.
Okay. Well, with that, your recommendation, I'll hold my issue. There's a motion and a second on this. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioners, we're now at item thirteen point zero three.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This item is to approve the transfer and administration of the tree banking policy from Public Works to Community Beautification and Waste Management.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second to approve staff recommendation. Commissioner Miller.
I had a need for a little more information about this. What, first of all, I'd like to know what the motivation of this is, and it says here to provide greater flexibility, and I'd like to know exactly what that means. My copy of the change doesn't have a strike ad, so I don't know what is actually changing. But it seems like to me that, you know, I understand that Public Works is no longer Public Works, but it has become Public Infrastructure, and the idea is to integrate their work with the utilities more closely. So it seems like to me that it's premature, especially when we've got an RFP for an urban forest master plan out there, to make changes ahead of time. I just don't, and I don't understand why, so I thought I'd ask.
Well, let me ask Jennifer Magavero to, well, I can address it. This part of Public Works, part of Public Works that managed this part is now a part of the old solid waste department, and so it just makes sense from a administrative sort of way in that the old Public Works Department doesn't exist anymore, but I think Reed can address the intricacies of it.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So there are some administrative pieces to it. That's what the manager just addressed. I think the expansion or the availability of the program for funding, right now, the program limits the ability for us to put new trees in the right-of-way, and we want more flexibility to put them on private roads that would be in the city, that would be visible by the city, and that would beautify the city, and give us a distance of a hundred feet, which may be out of the range of the power lines. It gives a little more flexibility in the yards of homes. We've received a lot of requests for those. We think there's a demand. We believe we can do it in a way where we can add a diverse urban forest and really beautify the city, as we have a very aged tree canopy. I think we'll find that out, and this gets us a head start on that. So it gives a little more flexibility of where we could put it, not limited to city roads and city right-of-way.
And so maybe you need to set an office briefing for me about this topic, because my concern is that, I don't, I agree with you that we should go beyond whatever the limit is, to the hundred feet, but any road, anywhere, I think we need to focus this money on roads, visibility roads. Well, what comes to mind right away is the project over with the Arts and Sciences School, where people coming to Thomasville Road is, without a doubt, that and Mahan are the most beautiful entrances into the city. And yet, here we have this nice, long stretch of green-coated chain-link fence. And to me, we can talk more about whether chain-link fences belong on our gateways in the first place, but secondarily, that is a place where I'd like to see you use this money to help them with planting so that they can continue to make that a really beautiful entrance into town. So while you're looking to have greater flexibility, throwing open the barn door at this point, I don't think is necessarily something I'm comfortable with, and so we can talk further in my office about how we can, what we need to do, what your intentions are, where you're going with this, but I still want this money spent as much on public right-of-way as possible. Okay.
Got it. Commissioners, there is a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item thirteen point zero four.
Yes, sir. The 2017-2018 CHSP funding recommendations have been completed and provided for your consideration and approval. The recommended action will provide over two and a half million dollars in city funds to support needed human services within the community. The funding recommendations were developed by the one hundred and four community volunteers that participated in the application review and evaluation process. Michael Parker and Pat Holliday are here to answer any questions you may have regarding this item, unless you want a presentation.
Commissioner Ziffer.
Mr. Mayor, the first thing is, for those of us that have been involved in this process, it's been several years for me. Where's Pat? She remembers. Long time ago. It is amazing the amount of time and effort that is put in by these volunteers, homework in advance, during, after, the whole process, going around the city. It's just a great process. I want to continue this process. I think it works very well. Having said that, after reviewing it, while there are clearly some favorites that didn't quite get as much and other ones that I seemed a bit surprised at, once again, the process works, so I want to thank the volunteers, but I'll move the item.
Here, here. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Thank you. Motion passes. Commissioners, we're going to stand in recess for the next fifteen minutes. Commissioners, we're going to stand in recess for the next 15 minutes.
Very well.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay.
How can we?
Okay.[320.22]
Calling this meeting back to order. We are now at the public hearing portion of our meeting. Oh, city manager's not here to introduce.
There he is.
Oh, here he is. We're just awaiting you. We're on budget.
You want to do the presentation?
But you...
Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is the first of two public hearings for the FY '17 budget. FY '17-'18 budget, excuse me. And I'll ask Robert to come up and do a brief presentation before we take public hearings.
Excuse me. What? You OK?
Yeah.
I don't think it hurt.
Mayor, commissioners, appointed officials, city manager. Tonight, we're conducting the first of two public hearings for the fiscal year '18 budget. As part of that process, we've received public in... Tonight, we'll receive public input on the fiscal year '18 proposed operating and capital budgets, followed by some votes, some procedural issues, and some votes that you'll walk through. We'll be asking you to adopt a tentative millage rate for the city and downtown improvement authority. Those millage rates are 4.1 mills and one mill for the downtown improvement authority. We'll also be asking you to adopt a tentative budget for the city and the downtown improvement authority as detailed in the agenda item. In both those cases, there will be further public advertisement in the newspaper between now and the 27th. And at that time, we'll come back and ask you to adopt a final budget for both of those entities. We're also asking you to adopt a resolution for solid waste commercial rates this evening. And we're at this step in the budget process based on a few steps that we've taken throughout the year. We've had 12 public meetings, which included quarterly updates on the fiscal year '17 budget. We've had budget workshops and public hearings on the fiscal year '18 budget. We've done strategic planning sessions where we've discussed the most relevant critical policy elements and how to implement those and reflect those in the current and the future budget. For additional perspective, as we've gone through the budget process, we've revisited the municipal cost comparison. We've expanded it from just residential survey and comparison to a business comparison also. We've done in-person and online surveys of the community and our shareholders or stakeholders. And then we've expanded the open government environment to include the public in discussion so that we could look at not only the budget itself, operating capital, but we've also included credit card detail, voucher detail, and then also the capital budget, as I mentioned, in the open government environment to encourage that discussion. So that transparent budget process was accomplished and, most importantly, then led to the efforts of the departments to implement functional consolidations and workforce reductions so that we could accomplish a balanced budget. As part of the direction of the city manager, that balanced budget also needed to maintain the service delivery standards and expectations for each of the departments. And we believe we have that in our balanced budget that we present to you tonight. The fiscal year '18 operating budget is balanced. It's a citywide budget of $743 million, which includes transfers for enterprise capital programs. I mention those transfers because that is one reason for the increase between last year's citywide budget and this year's citywide budget is the additional investment in our infrastructure. We have some capital programs that are gearing up and have those reflected in the capital budget. There's also increases in our fuel expenditures, natural gas for the plants and for those appliances that work well during storms and also during the winter that we'll have at some point soon. The fiscal year '18 general fund budget totals $153 million. That's $100,000 less than the operating budget last year. What I'm not including in that is an increase that we've transferred to roads and sidewalk as a maintenance program. So we've increased that budget by $1.5 million. But when you exclude that, our total general fund budget is $100,000 less than last year. Some additional key components to consider that are assumed in this budget. The city commission has approved 54 new public safety positions these past four years. Those are fully budgeted in fiscal year '18. The road and sidewalk capital maintenance program that I just mentioned, that we had a strategic planning session on coordinating those efforts between the underground utilities and public infrastructure, is increasing from $5 million to $6.5 million to address that coordinated planning. In other areas of the budget, the water and wastewater rate studies are progressing. They're expected to show the need for additional infrastructure improvements. That's dictated by growth and then the need to fund our RNI program, our renewal, replacement, and improvement program. As we progress in these next few months, Underground Utility is validating their debt service coverage, evaluating their debt program, and then checking debt-to-equity ratios so that we meet city standards for our financial management expectations. But also then, when we are rated by the rating agencies, that we meet those standards. We expect that once that review is done, that we're probably looking at residential bills for water and sewer, expecting to be increased by $3 for both services per month. And then, commercial bills will see an increase of $5 for water and sewer services per month for both services. The breakdown of that is for residential water bills. We expect an increase of about 75 cents for residential sewer bills, about $2.25, which makes up the $3. And then, for commercial, we're looking at $1.35 and $3.65 respectively. As we go through these next few months and enter into the new fiscal... Into the new calendar year, key community stakeholders will be involved. We've already started some of that outreach, going door-to-door, having open houses, talking about what these capital projects will look like, how they will make improvements to the systems, what the businesses and residential customers can expect to see during the time that we're in the construction phase. I have to say again, it's a great example of the coordination between doing door-to-door and open house outreach before we do the capital project. And the favorable response that we've gotten is very good. We've even had some businesses for the North Monroe Street Water and Sewer Project, which is a phasing in of wastewater improvements from John Knox Road to Thomasville Road. Some of the businesses in that area have actually said, "What can we do to accommodate those overnight work crews? If you're going to be in front of our business, we may adjust our work hours, our business hours, so that you can get the job done quicker." Again, just a remarkable example of the planning that goes into not only making sure that we have the appropriation, but that we're doing the projects the right way. Since our June and July meetings, two things have changed. We've gotten the final contract for Capital Health Plan, and we've seen a 6.9% increase in healthcare costs. We've incorporated that into the budget, balanced the budget. And we're asking you to approve and adopt those rates as part of this budget process. Additionally, we're asking for a solid waste commercial rate increase in January of 2018, on January 1st, of 2.6%. When we did the rate study last year, we identified a disparity between the commercial customers and the residential customers. And we feel like this rate change will erase that disparity between what residential and commercial ratepayers are paying for services. Another significant portion of the budget plan is our fiscal year '18 capital budget plan. Our total fiscal year '18 capital budget for the enterprise and for the general fund is $175 million. $118 of that is in the enterprise fund, and $56 million of that is in the general government. That includes the road and sidewalk maintenance program that we discussed. It also includes some significant projects, such as the airport security improvements, south ramp construction, some additional work or the next stage of work for FAMU Way, the street resurfacing master that I mentioned, and then fleet vehicles and utility master project for technology upgrades. As part of the next steps in this process, the commission will take actions on the resolutions that we presented to you, '17R-28 and '29, after the public hearing today. And then, we'll do that again with final budgets and millage rates on September 27th. At this time, the city attorney will read into the record some required steps in language to adopt the tentative millage rates, to adopt the tentative budget for the city and the DIA, open the public hearing, and accept your comments and votes. Before I take that step with the city attorney, are there any immediate questions?
Mr. Rammacks.
I just wanted to point out, sometimes we make really good decisions in the weeds and people don't realize that the decisions have been made. I brought up at the first budget workshop, asking the city staff to look at ways that we can bring things in-house rather than outsourcing them and come up with savings. The manager and his team did that. I spoke to Mr. Lavine today, and I asked him, "What is the cumulative savings that we are going to realize from that in this budget?" And it was $900,000 they expect to save. So that's a tremendous number that's going to help us not only this year, but in future years. And I just wanted, for the record, to get that out there, and thank you for your work.
Good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Attorney.
Thank you. There are several steps that we have to go through tonight pursuant to the state law, the Truth and Millage Act as part of state law. It requires certain steps in a certain order that things must be written to the record. So these steps are in the agenda item, page 9 of 10, under 1501, if you want to follow along. But the first item to read into the record is the following. The proposed millage rate for fiscal year 2018 is 4.1000 mills for the city of Tallahassee and 1.0000 mill for the Tallahassee Downtown Improvement Authority, which millage rate is more than the aggregate rollback rate of 3.9760 by 3.62%. The tentative millage rate is equal to last year's rate of 4.1 mills. Resolution number '17-R-28, which is in your agenda materials, is required to state the percentage that the tentative millage rate is more than the rollback rate. That's Attachment 1 in the agenda materials. The next two steps are to allow public input on the city's proposed millage and the city's proposed budget. If people have turned in speaker forms, they can speak on either the proposed millage rate or the proposed budget for the city at this time. In compliance with State Law Section 200.065, the date of this hearing was included in the TRIM notice that was mailed to all property owners by the Leon County Property Appraiser. So at this point in time, Ms. Treasurer Clerk will take speakers on either the city's proposed millage rate or the city's proposed budget.
I have one speaker on the item, Erwin Jackson. If there are others who wish to speak, they can bring me a speaker form, and I'll call them.
Dr. Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff. Commissioners, if we're going to have a public hearing that starts at 6:00, we really ought to start at 6:00. We don't like to wait here for you to finish eating and drinking. If we can sit out here, you should start at 6:00. Thank you. This commission professes that property taxes are going up. That is a lie. Our taxes are going up because of inflation. Property owners will pay more in taxes this coming year. This commission should reduce the tax rate to adjust for inflation. We also have a $2 million savings by refinancing some of our bonds for a next 20-year period. That $2 million savings should also be used to reduce the property taxes. We have one of the highest tax rates in the state. This commission is only able to lower taxes by transferring them to a new tax collection entity. For example, the fire service fee was created to minimize the tax increase in property taxes. What's in store in the future may be a safety tax fee to help pay for the police. Let's limit one family member to receive a city job. Enough of this giving jobs to our children, brothers, and spouses. City jobs are good-paying with benefits. Let's share these with as many families as possible in our community. The city manager makes around $240,000 a year. While the average taxpayer makes approximately $45,000 or less a year. Should Tricky Ricky get paid six times as much as families in Tallahassee? I think not. Arrogance and greed is well represented on this commission. A few other simple cuts. Let's reduce salaries of every city employee making over $100,000 per year by 10%. Let's cap city employees' salaries at $100,000. Let's eliminate car allowances for all city commissioners and appointed staff. Let's eliminate deferred compensation for appointed officials. And I suggest this would be a great time for Andrew Gillum to return the $100,000 in deferred comp that he has stashed away. Again, just a remarkable example of the planning that goes into not only making sure that we have the appropriation, but that we're doing the projects the right way. Since our June and July meetings, two things have changed. We've gotten the final contract for Capital Health Plan, and we've seen a 6.9% increase in healthcare costs. We've incorporated that into the budget, balanced the budget, and we're asking you to approve and adopt those rates as part of this budget process. Additionally, we're asking for a solid waste commercial rate increase in January of 2018, on January 1st, of 2.6%. When we did the rate study last year, we identified a disparity between the commercial customers and the residential customers, and we feel like this rate change will erase that disparity between what residential and commercial ratepayers are paying for services. Another significant portion of the budget plan is our fiscal year 18 capital budget plan. Our total fiscal year 18 capital budget for the enterprise and for the general fund is $175 million. 118 of that is in the enterprise fund, and $56 million of that is in the general government. That includes the road and sidewalk maintenance program that we discussed. It also includes some significant projects, such as the airport security improvements, south ramp construction, some additional work, or the next stage of work for FAMU Way, the street resurfacing master that I mentioned, and then fleet vehicles and utility master project for technology upgrades. As part of the next steps in this process, the commission will take actions on the resolutions that we presented to you, 17R-28 and 29, after the public hearing today. And then, we'll do that again with final budgets and millage rates on September 27th. At this time, the city attorney will read into the record some required steps and language to adopt the tentative millage rates, to adopt the tentative budget for the city and the DIA, open the public hearing, and accept your comments and votes. Before I take that step with the city attorney, are there any immediate questions?
Mr. Romatix.
I just wanted to point out, sometimes we make really good decisions in the weeds, and people don't realize that the decisions have been made. I brought up at the first budget workshop, asking the city staff to look at ways that we can bring things in-house rather than outsourcing them and come up with savings. The manager and his team did that. I spoke to Mr. Lavin today, and I asked him, "What is the cumulative savings that we are going to realize from that in this budget?" And it was $900,000 they expect to save. So, that's a tremendous number that's going to help us, not only this year, but in future years. And I just wanted, for the record, to get that out there, and thank you for your work.
Good job.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Attorney.
Thank you. There are several steps that we have to go through tonight pursuant to the state law, the Truth and Millage Act as part of state law. It requires certain steps in a certain order that things must be written to the record. So, these steps are in the agenda item, page 9 of 10, under 1501, if you want to follow along. But the first item to read into the record is the following. The proposed millage rate for fiscal year 2018 is 4.1000 mils for the city of Tallahassee and 1.0000 mil for the Tallahassee Downtown Improvement Authority, which millage rate is more than the aggregate rollback rate of 3.9760 by 3.62%. The tentative millage rate is equal to last year's rate of 4.1 mils. Resolution number 17-R-28, which is in your agenda materials, is required to state the percentage that the tentative millage rate is more than the rollback rate. That's Attachment 1 in the agenda materials. The next two steps are to allow public input on the city's proposed millage and the city's proposed budget. If people have turned in speaker forms, they can speak on either the proposed millage rate or the proposed budget for the city at this time. In compliance with State Law Section 200.065, the date of this hearing was included in the TRIM notice that was mailed to all property owners by the Leon County Property Appraiser. So, at this point in time, Ms. Treasurer Clerk will take speakers on either the city's proposed millage rate or the city's proposed budget.
I have one speaker on the item, Erwin Jackson. If there are others who wish to speak, they can bring me a speaker form, and I'll call them.
Dr. Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff. Commissioners, if we're going to have a public hearing that starts at 6:00, we really ought to start at 6:00. We don't like to wait here for you to finish eating and drinking. If we can sit out here, you should start at 6:00. Thank you. This commission professes that property taxes are going up. That is a lie. Our taxes are going up because of inflation. Property owners will pay more in taxes this coming year. This commission should reduce the tax rate to adjust for inflation. We also have a $2 million savings by refinancing some of our bonds for a next 20-year period. That $2 million savings should also be used to reduce the property taxes. We have one of the highest tax rates in the state. This commission is only able to lower taxes by transferring them to a new tax collection entity. For example, the fire service fee was created to minimize the tax increase in property taxes. What's in store in the future may be a safety tax fee to help pay for the police. Let's limit one family member to receive a city job. Enough of this giving jobs to our children, brothers, and spouses. City jobs are good-paying with benefits. Let's share these with as many families as possible in our community. The city manager makes around $240,000 a year, while the average taxpayer makes approximately $45,000 or less a year. Should Tricky Ricky get paid six times as much as families in Tallahassee? I think not. Arrogance and greed is well represented on this commission. A few other simple cuts. Let's reduce salaries of every city employee making over $100,000 per year by 10%. Let's cap city employees' salaries at $100,000. Let's eliminate car allowances for all city commissioners and appointed staff. Let's eliminate deferred compensation for appointed officials. And I suggest this would be a great time for Andrew Gillum to return the $100,000 in deferred comp that he has stashed away. I'd also point out that Gil Ziffer, who hasn't mentioned it, but who returned his deferred comp several years ago. Eliminate all retirement benefits for part-time city commission jobs. Working eight years and getting full retirement's ridiculous. Finally, I started posting on Facebook about city corruption about 70 days ago. My numbers of friends have gone from 400 to over 3,000. And Facebook informed me yesterday that I have over 6,000 likes on my comments. This tells me Tallahassee is ready to eliminate the corruption in City Hall. And yes, commissioners, there's a number of folks that are really listening to me. And I join you to join my Facebook account. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
We have no other speakers, Mayor.
Great. City Attorney?
Okay, this concludes the public input on the city's proposed millage rate and the city's proposed budget, unless there are other speakers at this time that wish to speak. If not, the next two steps, steps 4 and 5, are to allow public input on the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed millage 1.000 mil and the DIA's proposed budget. In compliance with Florida statutes, again, 200.065. The date of this hearing dealing with the DIA was also included in the TRIM notice, which was mailed to all property owners by the County Property Appraiser. So, at this point in time, if we have any speakers on the DIA's proposed millage or the DIA's proposed budget, it's appropriate to take that comment.
We have no speakers.
Okay. Hearing no comments on the DIA, then the next step, step 6, is to approve the adjustments of the city proposed budget, as you've heard earlier from Mr. Wiggins. Prior to this time, this is the time that the city commissioners may discuss the proposed millage rate and/or the proposed budget. The public hearing process is concluded for today.
Great. Thank you. Commissioners, any comments? Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
Mr. Attorney, the way that was stated about the Downtown Improvement Authority, it sounded a little bit like every taxpayer in the city pays that, and that is not the case. It is something that was voted on by referendum by the people who are included in the very limited downtown improvement area. So, if you could clarify that for the folks who are listening.
That's correct. The DIA increase, or DIA tax is only for businesses in the DIA area.
Great. Thank you. Commissioners, we'll obviously have continued action on the budget at the next public hearing.
Mayor?
Yes.
At this point in time, if there's no further discussion by the commissioners, then I would need a motion to approve all the adjustments to the city's proposed budget as recommended in the agenda item, or which have been identified and highlighted by Mr. Wiggins.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Next, I need to have a motion for approval of the city's tentative millage rate of 4.1000 mils, as set forth in Resolution Number 17-R-28 in the agenda item.
So moved.
And the millage rate, again, as indicated earlier, the proposed aggregate millage rate is more than the rollback rate of 3.9760 by 3.62%.
So moved.
There is a motion and a second on the item. Seeing no comments, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Next, I need a motion for approval of the city's tentative budget, as amended and as discussed in Robert Wiggins' presentation.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Seeing no comments, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Next, I need approval of the DIA's, that is, Downtown Improvement Authority's tentative millage rate of 1.00 mil, as stated in the attached Resolution Number 17-R-28 in the agenda items.
So moved.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Finally, I need to have a motion for approval of the DIA Authority's tentative budget, which is indicated in the agenda item. The DIA's proposed budget is $396,250.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the DIA budget. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Getting close to the end here. To summarize, the city commission has tentatively approved the millage rate for both the city and the DIA, and the expenditures and obligations of the city of Tallahassee and the DIA for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018, designate the sources of revenue as well as the appropriation. The titles to the resolution setting forth the commission's approvals are as follows. There are two resolutions. Resolution Number 17-R-28, its title is a resolution establishing a millage rate for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018, as 4.1000 mils for the city of Tallahassee and 1.000 mils for the Downtown Improvement Authority, which is more than the aggregate rollback rate of 3.9760 by 3.62% and establishing an effective date thereof. The other resolution is a resolution Number 17-R-29. It's a resolution adopting the operating and capital budgets for the city of Tallahassee for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018, designate the sources of revenue and set appropriations and providing for an effective date. Finally, a public hearing on this budget, the final budget, will be held on Wednesday, September 27, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. in these chambers, at which time Resolution Number 17-R-28, setting the millage rate, and Resolution Number 17-R-29, setting the budget, are proposed and will be approved. Contingent upon commission action, the resolutions are required budget summary advertisement will be adjusted for all issues resolved as part of this agenda item, as well as other items approved during tonight's meeting, which may affect fiscal year 2018 budget. Finally, as part of this agenda item, we have Resolution Number 17-R-35, which is a proposed revision of solid waste rates. That resolution needs to be approved tonight, so I need a motion for approval of Resolution 17-R-35. This was the last material in the agenda item.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second to approve the solid waste rates. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
And that completes our work tonight on the budget.
Great. Thank you, City Attorney, City Manager. We're now on to Item 15.02. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is simply for the commission to adopt and certify the 2017 Non-Ad Valorem Assessment Rule. It allows us to place these annual assessments on the property tax bill for the affected property owners, primarily or street paving assessments from prior years. This is an annual item that you have come before you. I don't have any speakers on that.
Great. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Commissioners, we're now back up to policy formation, Item 13.05. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. In May of 2017, the planning department solicited proposals for a bike-share program for the city. A selection committee reviewed and ranked each vendor proposal, and today, staff's request and the city commission approve the selection committee's advisory ranking. Staff is also requesting the city commission authorize staff to enter into contract negotiations with Zaxter, Inc., as the top-ranked vendor. Cherie Bryan is here to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Cherie. Commissioners, is there a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Just want to speak in strong favor of this. Commissioners, y'all will remember, we had the great demonstration, and it was just commissions intent to get a provider that would have low- to no-cost impact to the government. The staff went forward with a pretty competitive RFP. I think y'all had four or five vendors that responded to the request for service. I actually believe this gives us, this is kind of up Commissioner Miller's wheelhouse with regard to wayfinding and that kind of thing, but the ability for folks to ride bikes all throughout this community, the partnership that will exist between the universities, I think just helped to contribute to seeing the quality of life of this community improved and more people using our bikeways. I know we've done a lot of improvement with the bike boxes and other pedestrian amenities. The only thing I think we got to do a lot more of is pedestrian education around how to interact with bicycles. And so, to the extent that WCO T can continue to sort of ramp up those educational programming, I think that would be great. Commissioner Ziffer?
Just a quick comment, unrelated but related. Reese, what is, we have 20 buses? I think we have 20 buses that are being wrapped courtesy of the Department of Transportation with a bicycle pedestrian safety message that will be on our buses for quite some time. So, if you're driving around the city of Tallahassee, you're going to see a message in front of you just about anywhere you go on bicycle pedestrian safety.
That's great. Commissioner, thanks for sharing that. Commissioners, there is a motion and a second to approve this item. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, staff, for your hard work and diligence on that. Commissioners, 13.06 was deleted, or rather, rescheduled. 13.07, City Treasurer Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. In 2007, the city issued consolidated utility system bonds to fund primarily construction of the TP Smith Advanced Wastewater Treatment Plan, along with some other projects. Those bonds are currently callable and allows us to refund or refinance those at significant savings. This resolution authorizes staff to continue down the path of refunding those bonds and save us money.
Great.
So moved.
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Item 13.08, City Attorney. City, or Real Estate, I'm sorry, City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, Real Estate Management is requesting your approval to solicit competitive bids for three properties. We have two townhouse units at 2735 Park Avenue, a vacant parcel on Mission Road, and a vacant parcel on Stern Street. In addition, approval is requested for a sale without competitive bidding for the State University for a vacant parcel on Roberts Avenue to be used as part of the College of Medicine's medical clinic facility. Your policy Number 136 allows a sale to a governmental unit without competitive bidding. Judy Donahoe is here to answer any questions and to give a brief presentation if you need.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Miller?
Well, I think, I don't know how you feel about our presentation. My questions are really focused on the Park Avenue property, and if Judy wants to throw up a map of that, then it'd be easier for you to see what my questions mean. They really center around the fact that this property was bought because it was in a flood zone. Several properties were, well, I should let her tell you all this because she's going to be a lot better at it than I am, but the basic bottom line is that we've got two pieces of property out there that are in flood zones still today. We've done flood improvements that have helped, but we're now in the rental business, and we're in the position where these things are rented, and they have water problems. And if we sell this, we're just going to be dealing with future liability for the next owner, who's going to be coming in here demanding that the water issues that he has in terms of moisture and things that might offend his renters are, you know, somehow the city's liability. So, with that, Judy, you want to add some information to that?
Yes, thank you very much, Commissioner, and good evening to Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, and Commissioners and appointed officials. We bought five units back in 2000 as part of the Park Avenue widening road project. We subsequently sold three of them, the three that were not flood-prone, and they didn't have the problems that these two particular units have had historically. They were flooded very badly in 2007 by Tropical Storm Fae. And subsequent to 2000, the storm in 2007, we did use FEMA money to rehab them. After that point, we started renting them again, and we've experienced a lot of vacancy and a lot of abuse of the units by the tenants. As Commissioner Miller suggested, we're not in the property rental business. So, the recommendation is to either sell them or to, well, what we'd like to do is to divest the city of these two properties.
Commissioner Ziffer, followed by Commissioner Miller, followed by Commissioner Ziffer.
Well, I think the ideal situation at the end of the day here would be that if we were able to demolish these two, and when talking with staff this afternoon, I mean, because whoever buys these, they're going to be right back here. When we have another storm, they use the money to rehab them. As soon as we have another storm like Fae, which we could, which we almost did, we're going to be right back in the same boat. And I am not comfortable selling these properties to somebody else that are in the flood zone. We acquired them for a reason, and I think I'd like to give staff some flexibility to go forward and see if they can't come up with some other solutions that might lead us down a different direction.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner?
I'm going to move the item with the removal of the Park Avenue properties. I think Commissioner Miller has a very good point. Basically, most flood maps today that the National Flood, existing National Flood Insurance Program utilizes are outdated. They don't take into account growth that's occurred around them, and it concerns me with Commissioner Miller said that we're basically going to sell parcels that we know in advance have issues. So, either we're going to have to do some pre-mitigation so we make sure they don't flood again, or we're going to have to discount them to the point where we're going to allow the owner to do that. Otherwise, we're going to have a whole bunch of problems. So, I guess that I'll move the item with the removal of the Park Avenue properties for further discussion at a future time.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on that amended proposal. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion as amended, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Ziffer?
Commissioner Miller, if you wouldn't mind working with staff to bring back a recommendation that might include anything from demolition to selling or mitigation, whatever that might include.
Yeah, they had some really good ideas about different ways we could approach this. I'm sure they'll come back to us soon with some, with another proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Judy.
Okay.
Commissioners, we're now on Item, well, no, we took up 13.09. So, we're on un-agenda speakers. Treasurer Clerk, are there any speakers?
Yes, Mayor. The first speaker is Curtis Baines, followed by Jerry Lindsey. As with our earlier portion of the meeting, speakers will have three minutes for their remarks. If you will give your name and address for the record, I would appreciate it. Mr. Baines?
Good evening, Curtis Baines, 1323 East Tennessee Street. I wanted to take a few moments this evening to discuss the ethics environment and some of the things that we may need to do at some point. I'm not exactly sure when. This doesn't have to do with any particular issue before the Ethics Committee, but it raised my thinking because of it. And that has to do with the referral of some complaints to the State Ethics Commission, which is, you know, counter to everything we were trying to do with the creation of the city's Independence Ethics Board. And I was a little bit concerned that the Ethics Committee, and again, they're meeting tomorrow at 5:00, and I'll bring this to their attention at that point, but I wanted you to be aware of it also, that I don't know about all of those others who voted for it, but I've been kind of stymied by, or confused by some of their actions over the last couple of years. I think there's some issues they're going to have to deal with. For one, has to do with referring cases that they were created to For one, has to do with referring cases that they were created to consider. And I don't know if that has to do with the confidence of the individual committee members or if it has to do with the ordinance that set forth their charge, or if it just has to do with an issue of staffing. But I would like to see them start taking on more responsibility for the kinds of things that we expected them to undertake. And I don't see that they've done that significantly at this point, and there may be an issue that comes up. It may have to do with some of the provisions in the ordinance dealing with the kinds of things that they should be paying attention to. So I wanted you to be aware of it because I'll be bringing this to their attention tomorrow. It may involve some ordinance changes. I hope you're agreeable to that. If it comes to that, that'll be something I think they have the power to do is recommend changes in the ordinance, and that'll be some issue we deal with further down the road. But thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Welcome back, Mr. Baines.
The next speaker is Jerry Lindsay, followed by Dr. Hallifield.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jerry Lindsay. I own property on Stern Street. And I apologize for not contacting you ahead of time, but I didn't know this item was going to be on the agenda. I'm surprised because we talked with staff and begged and pleaded for that property not to be sold. And you remember us about the property behind us on Stern Street that was sold to Mr. Zimmer and developed for student housing, and we worked with you quite a bit on that issue. This particular piece of property is sold and developed for multi, for student housing, multi-apartments, basically. We're going to have even more traffic on a tiny little road that was built during horse and buggy times. And you, those of you who've come out there, you remember those big oak trees that are so tiny that two cars can't pass abreast. I was really pleased to see you approve the bike share because the people who live on Stern Street now are big bicyclists, where a lot of them don't even own a car. And so putting multi-unit housing on that corner is going to make that street even less appropriate for the bicyclists who live there and unsafe. And it is just really important for the green space, what little bit remains in that, will remain in that community, and we would like to see you not, you know, approve this for sale eventually. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Ed Hallifield, and he is the last speaker for the evening, Mayor.
Thank you.
I graduated from, pardon my allergies and disappearing voice, I graduated from Falmouth High in 1964 in a school system thoroughly segregated under the scope of racist apartheid. Managed to escape that system, went to some of the finest schools in the country after escaping, including the University of Pennsylvania, University of Michigan, medical school, board certified, internal medicine, cardiology. And yet, Roxanne Manning sends an email to Rob Renzi of Big Ben Cares and says, "How is it that this guy never understands the facts of a situation? I am going to stop calling him doctor." Surely, he does not deserve that title. Well, first of all, doctor is not a title, it's a degree. And I'd like to know what she proposes to call me. Does she think boy would be more appropriate? Or maybe Sambo? Or even nigger? So if Roxanne, if you don't think I should be called doctor, what do you want to call me? And then she puts it in an email and sends it to Rob Renzi, who is not exactly a friend of mine. Matter of fact, on May 10th, Rob Renzi threatened to call the police on me because I guess he think there aren't quite enough men, black men in the Leon County jail. I mean, this is beyond any kind of rational understanding.
Excuse me, that's your three minutes?
Well, I need to speak some more.
Dr. Hallifield will give another minute.
This is beyond rational understanding because, number one, Rob Renzi never reported that contamination to DEP. I reported it. If I hadn't reported those carcinogens, benzoyl parain and all of that other stuff that was on the property, yeah, I still wouldn't know about it.
Dr. Hallifield, if you could wrap up, please.
The city didn't report it. The county didn't report it. And what does Rob Renzi do? He calls me a liar. And then he goes around suing anybody that criticizes Big Ben Care as if...
Thank you, Dr. Hallifield.
As if anybody who criticizes Big Ben Cares, evidently they're going to use that money to try to sue people.
Thank you, Dr. Hallifield. Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor, we did have an additional speaker come in, Jack Quillman.
Un-adjented speakers?
Please.
When Martha Barnett was setting up the Ethics Commission and trying to make everything work...
Excuse me, one second. If you would give your name and address.
1900 South Barnway.
And then you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Yes. I asked a city attorney, who would he represent if it came to a crunch, the city or the Commissioners? The Democrat ran an article that Lou Shelley said that he didn't want anybody talking to the FBI. I'm sorry, but that tells the rest of us, either you don't know what's going on, or you don't know what's going, or you don't want to know what's going on. And I don't feel like you're representing the rest of us. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
No, sir.
All right, great. Commissioners, anything? Under sharing of ideas. Commissioners, Ziffer, followed by Commissioner Miller. He deferred.
First of all, I want to say that I'm glad that all of you survived the storm and that you personally, so I'm glad that all of you are here tonight and that I'm glad we decided to have our meeting because I think it's been a very constructive time. I think that we've had a nice, calm, uncluttered week, basically, other than that little storm we had at the beginning of the week. To concentrate on the work that we had to do here tonight as our first meeting back after the, after the summer break. I've had a great deal of opportunity this summer to get to know the League of Cities better and to also become more concerned about the issues that are going to be facing not only the city of Tallahassee but other cities throughout the state. And as I mentioned earlier, we have some significant challenges across the street from us. We can't afford to make any mistakes this year in our lobbying effort. And for that reason, I'd like to ask that you all consider moving that task over to the manager's office and have one person who is able to be immersed completely in, with no other responsibility than to manage that effort as we go forward into the fall when the meetings begin and then through the session next year. Just want to put that out there. I know the mayor's office has done a good job, but last year we had a lot of, well, we had apparently some confusion, and I thought maybe we could let them do their work and move this particular task over to the manager's office.
Commissioner Ziffer?
I'll jump in because I have something that is...
Well, the mayor already said it was okay, so we can just move right on that.
No, I'm going to think about what you just said before I speak.
I think there, you know, part of the lobbying efforts, one is a policy and the other one is budget. And when it comes to legislature, and the policy, a lot of the things that I've been talking about, and Commissioner Miller, I know that you're getting engaged in what the mayor's been talking about, and that is the legislature intruding upon and taking away our ability for home rule. And then, of course, there are budget items that we pursue that have to do with infrastructure and other things of that nature, which are two very different things because, quite frankly, from a lobbying standpoint, I think it's important for us to at least have folks that know what the intricacies when it comes to pursuing budget items. But policy, quite frankly, Commissioner Miller, on some level, I agree with you in that I think really policy depends on the five of us lobbying over there. So I do want to have more discussion on this if we could. The problem is our time's running out because committee meetings, we're already supposed to have started this week. I know the Speaker delayed them as a result of the storm, so maybe we could have further discussion in our 27th meeting about this, more robust. At the same time, I'd like to throw in, last year, we, and this is as a result of my trip to DC last week, last year, we extended our state lobbying contract two years. We did not extend our federal lobbying, and there's still one more year on it, and it runs out right now as of November 1st. And we are right now getting ready to get into a whole lot of different things when it comes to a federal level, from a budgeting standpoint to policy items. And we need, in my opinion, to have that engagement on a federal level. I think the Rixbees and Chain Sergeant have done a good job for us, so I think part of the conversation on the 27th, if we're going to do it then, would include extending that contract, at least that one more year that we have. So I'm going to make a suggestion then to peg you back on Commissioner Miller to have a lobbying discussion on the 27th. And then I have some other items.
I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem with having a lobbying discussion. I do think these are significant shifts. There's a, I think, a healthy respect and protocol that we could at least establish that we would agenda these items for an appropriate opportunity for staff to respond and get a recommendation pull together and not sort of pull these things out of the hat at a moment's whim. So happy to put some thought into what the 27th will look like and get some thoughts. As you all know, we do have professional lobbyists that we hire who actually do the lobbying work on our behalf. So I'd like to get a better sense of how this might be operationalized, and I'm happy to talk to the manager in further detail about it.
And Mayor, I understand, I understand your comments completely. This is our first meeting, and I was interested in making this change, and I'd actually discussed it with the manager, but there's really no way to move forward until we had a meeting. And I think this is basically having it just on the agenda for the 27th is probably, that is without a doubt the right, the right thing to do, and that is certainly my, I didn't have any intention of having you all make a decision on this tonight, though. Wanted you to know that.
Great, thank you. Commissioner?
Okay, a few more things for me. First of all, as much and as great an effort we had, the devastation that exists in so much of our state is, should be, not only from a personal hardship and law standpoint, but the impact it's going to have on our state over the coming days and even years is significant. And so I want to express my concern and offer my thoughts and prayers to those folks that are in East Florida and Central Florida and South Florida that are going through so much, so much devastation. A couple of more things. Southwood, in case any of you have had these conversations, the development, and I hold Southwood near and dear to my heart because I lived there for 12 years and was engaged in the development way back when, before I went into city government. But they're having a whole lot of discussions out there that are disagreements between their HOA and their CDD, and do they build a pool and they not build a pool? And St. Joe has some corrections that they'd like to make, not diminishing, but maybe changing the layout of their town center, and there's just a whole number of things going on. And additionally, there is some talk about perhaps on our land, allowing some housing developed for special needs folks that we've talked about before. So if we could, because we don't want staff doing anything without us knowing it, is giving staff some direction to start to maybe talk to folks in Southwood and see how we can, pardon the expression, bundle all this together and try to solve some problems. I will alert you, on the 19th of September, I'm sitting down with the CDD folks and HOA and St. Joe, and I think Premier's going to be there too, to try to work through some of the problems that are happening so we can report that back as well. Because I think there's an opportunity to get everybody in the room together and resolve some of these, which I'll work on. But if we could agree to perhaps give staff a recommendation to try to wrap all this into something that works. So that's something, I'm not sure if that requires a motion or...
Agreed.
My only hesitation is that I'm concerned about getting in-between disagreements that are between a CDD and a homeowners association.
That's what I'm doing on the 19th, not you guys.
Yeah, more power to you because that is a, I don't want to have...
Hey, this is my game, you know?
Be deciding, taking a side of one group of Southwood residents against the other. And when it's an issue between the two of them, so question is advised.
Commissioner, I think when you hear all the different sides, because they really haven't sat down, you can kind of pick out, okay, wait a minute, there are points of agreement, and it's getting it together to hopefully work through that. So that's what that is. This has more to do with if good, positive things come out of that, how do we incorporate all these together so that we as a commission could take some type of position?
All right, good.
I'll just say, I don't, I don't have, I don't know that it takes a motion to have you obviously continue to have those conversations. I'm equally reticent on, I met with folks on different sides of this, and I'm, I'll maintain my own personal opinion on it. But obviously, if something were to come back to us for action, you know, at that time, I'm happy to vote one way or another around what is to come forward. But in the meantime, Commissioner, I think you're, as an elected official, completely empowered to have any conversations you want.
Well, this, I'm sorry, let me just, no, no, no. This also, though, has to do with depending upon what count of that, because this is prior to our meeting on the 27th, allowing staff to get engaged a little bit, not to solve the problems, but just trying to bring everything together and then for us to solve it.
Can I question? And then I'll yield the floor, but my question is that we've got two separate issues here as far as I can tell, and one has to do with the city property that we're responsible for managing. The other one is the other situation that I was referring to earlier, so...
Well, let's separate the two then. I'll work on the situation that nobody wants to touch and...
You can work on all of that, Commissioner Ziffer, and just bring it back to us in bite-sized pieces. Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson?
I guess the question that I have is, what are we, what is the end game in all of this? Is it to, at some point, come back with a recommendation for what we do with the city property or...
Yes.
So that's, that's the end game? And it, and that could include building a swimming pool and building housing for persons with disabilities?
I think the swimming pool is no longer on the table.
Okay.
That was, that was a vote that I think they took at their CDD, and they're no longer interested in doing the swimming pool, so I think that's done.
Okay. So the issue then is the housing for...
Housing and potentially the ball fields they're still talking about.
Okay.
So it has to do with staff being engaged really on our property. I'll deal with the rest.
Okay.
And on Commissioner Richardson's point, this will give us a good review of exactly what criteria and limitations and encumbrances are applied to the city's property so that we can find, you know, discover what's appropriate there and what we can actually do. So, thank you.
The next thing is a little more complicated. So... The next thing is a little more complicated, so bear with me for a minute. This goes back now, I think it was probably May, and since that time, I've had a number of meetings, and this has to do with our Ethics Board. I've met with Richard Herring, I've met with Jack Campbell with some suggestions he had, I've met with the citizens that originally brought the ethics reform idea forward and had it on the ballot, which was later approved, and I am of the belief, and I'm gonna list just a couple of things that we could consider, and I'll go into them in a second, but my advice on this would be for us to ask our city attorney and the attorney for the Ethics Board to sit down and try to work through language. I think it is important for us to do the following. I think misuse of position is important for us to address, use of city resources, other than generally available to the public, we should address, other employment, if there are potential conflicts, I think we should address, acceptance of gifts that might influence one's behavior, and then here's the two more. One has to do with, and this is a little complicated, because it was, it would involve hiring an outside auditor. I think all five of our city office accounts should be audited on an annual basis, period, no questions asked. I don't think it's a matter of, we ask for an audit, I think there ought to be an audit. And finally, because I think this is an important one, I don't think there should be any penalties placed on any of us unless there are sworn complaints, which means non-anonymous. So if there are penalties imposed, it has to be with a complaint that comes from an individual that actually swears to it. So those are the things that I would like to work towards. I don't think we have time to bring this back to meeting on the 27th, so it'll be sometime during our meetings in October, but as I said, work with our city attorney and also the attorney for the Ethics Board and try to get some of these resolved. I think it's important for us to do those things. These are things that, quite frankly, if we had them on the books now, some of our issues would have been resolved before they seemed to be getting out of control. That's my position, so I'm asking for approval for us to have those discussions.
I don't know that you need approval. I think you, any, any one of us can bring up any item that we like. I'm, I don't know about a negotiation between the city attorney and the attorney for the Ethics Board. I think what I'm mostly interested in with regard to the Ethics Board is, one, eliminating duplication. What shouldn't exist is that I think an elected official of this body face the same accusations here, and then have them repeated again at a different Ethics Board, and frankly, have different rulings and renderings that come from each, one based off of what the state's law is and one with the local law is. The citizens did vote on and pass an ethics bill that was comprehensive in its nature, that's exactly what they're operating under at this time, and what I'd be interested in from the city attorney is where the gaps are. Gaps meaning, if there is a wrongdoing that takes place that should be accounted for in the law, and that there are penalties that can result from it, is there an entity that has the ability and the right to then levy those? If that's the state Ethics Board that has the ability and the right to levy those, then they should absolutely do it. And there are mechanisms for an individual to actually bring those before the state Ethics Board, but for one board to be able to act in one way and yield its own penalties, and then for a citizen to then be able to go to the state Ethics Board and make a very similar claim, and then there's a set of penalties that come with that, I think that's overdone. The Ethics Board has a responsibility in the state, there are laws on the books that govern that, and we oughta, we oughta make sure that what we're accounting for is what might fall through the cracks. To that extent, you know, I completely agree, and I'm curious, I'd be curious from the city attorney, what are those instances where something falls through the crack and is not accounted for?
Well, I think one of the reasons why one did go to the state is because our Ethics Board didn't feel like they have the ability to deal with that. And so I'm, total agreement, I don't want to see double jeopardy, anybody has to face it by going before two different entities for the same thing. I think we can deal with it locally, I think that's what the citizens want, and I think they expressed through their vote that they wanted us to try to deal with these things here before they had to go anywhere else, which is what I'm trying to suggest we deal with. Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson.
Mr. Attorney, I, I, it seems like I recall you and I having a discussion at some point where you said that these things were being addressed in policy?
No, not, not in policy. There's pending right now, some recommendations from the Ethics Board to the City Commission, changes in city ordinances that would enhance, essentially, the state law does provide for local Ethics Boards to have enhanced criteria, enhanced penalties on some of these areas. And I think we have a opportunity set up at a meeting in October, if I'm not mistaken, to discuss some of that. There is no doubt some, some areas that our Ethics Board is, or asking the City Commission to give them authority that's in excess of what is required under state law in, in the areas of misuse of position, for example. And I, I don't have any problem, in fact, I, since those recommendations have been sent to you a couple of months back, I, I have, on more than one occasion, talked with the attorney for the Independent Ethics Board and discussed areas that I would feel comfortable in making a recommendation and be in agreement with what the Ethics Board has sent over, so...
So what additional authority are you seeking from the commission to do if you're already in that process?
I, I, I think I don't need the authority, quite honestly, Mr. Mayor. I, I am happy to, to know the, the will of the commission to move forward on this whole area, which obviously Commissioner Ziffer is, so that's, that's positive. And when we have a, an item on the agenda in the October meeting, then we can discuss in greater detail and prepare an appropriate agenda item dealing with, with all the issues that you're raising.
Just, just so that I'm clear, if, if you're already in the process of...
Right.
...meeting with and developing a set of recommendations to be adjourned in October, what are we, what are we, what are we talking about?
Quite honestly, I, I don't know. What we talk about are the areas that, right now, things fall through the cracks, meaning they're not covered either by state law or by local ordinance. That's something we have, I have not looked in, or been asked to look into, and certainly will do that prior to our October meeting, but I think it's certainly appropriate to feel comfortable that we'll bring this and put it on the agenda in October.
Great.
So then, Mr. Attorney, you are following up, what you're telling us is that you are, in fact, following up on the recommendations?
Yeah, and I, and I think, quite honestly, it would have, we would have had an item requested put on the agenda in September, but for the fact that we had the commission not been meeting for about six weeks, and we had the budget items that were, were first and foremost. So I, I think Commissioner Ziffer, we'll, we'll get to what you want and have something that to present to the entire commission for a look and discussion on the October meeting. I'm sorry, I don't have the date, the October meeting. I guess now, there's, there's only one meeting in, in October, so it'd be that, that meeting.
Great. Commissioner.
For me, I appreciate all of that. What I'm doing then tonight is getting the ball rolling so that that second meeting in October, we're actually voting on actual recommendations that are being set forth before us. I would rather not wait for that October meeting to start to have the discussion, so that sometime in November and December we do this. I want to go ahead and get the, the actions moving so that there actually is an agenda item before us that has specific items that we can vote on that evening.
We can certainly...
Are these ordinance changes?
There will be ordinance changes.
Is there not a process for ordinance changes?
Well, the, the, we can do a proposed ordinance in each of the areas that you have mentioned...
Yes, sir.
...and use that as a basis for discussion.
I'll, I'll tell you what I'm actually interested in, is there are a set of recommendations that are before you that have come from the Ethics Board. We have not seen a full airing of that in your recommendations.
Right.
So what you just, then just asked for is a draft ordinance, which to me is a leap far beyond where we are right now. We haven't even had an opportunity to get a presentation before this board on what those recommendations are.
Well, those have actually been sent to individual commissioners.
That's correct. We have not had before this board a full airing of those.
We vote on lots of things that we don't have a full airing on.
All, all I'm saying is, is you just asked for, he just said he's gonna bring back an ordinance that is consistent with what your recommendations are, and I'm actually interested in what the total plate is. And just as you may have ideas, the rest of us may have ideas that we may want to add to that ordinance.
I agree.
So all I'm saying is, we should do things right and in order, and right and in order, to me, would appear that you would bring an item here that would allow us to then respond to it.
We can certainly do that. Alternatively, if we are gonna have any kind of workshop between now and then, we can put that topic on a workshop so that there are a variety of, of issues that different commissioners may have, that they would like to see, you know, ordinance changes about.
Right. Commissioner Maddox, followed by Commissioner Miller and Richardson.
I'd feel more comfortable with that. I have opinions on, on the things that are brought up, some of them are not objectionable to me at all, but also have opinions on, on the lobbying function and why we made the change that we made so many years ago, but it, it's, it's not productive to talk about all these things under sharing of ideas. So let's get it to a forum where we can make a good policy decision.
Commissioner Miller, followed by Commissioner Richardson.
But the form of jumping from sharing of ideas all the way to a proposed ordinance that the attorney's gonna draft in the meantime is too big of a jump for me. We had a workshop in the past, we, I had the gentleman reference Ms. Barnett and the committee, and the, we went very, very carefully, had a workshop and went through every single one of those, and all of the ones that were incorporated were incorporated, all the ones that weren't incorporated were not incorporated for a reason, partly, in one case, it would limit First Amendment rights, in another case, I mean, there were several different things that held those other recommendations back in the very beginning from that committee. I think that we need to revisit this in the same sense of, of attention to detail as to what those ramifications are, would rather are discussing. I know that when I met with Mr. Herring, I had a wonderfully informative meeting with him, and we did go through the letter, letter by letter, essentially, and I was able to have a real good dialogue with him as to how certain things would play out, essentially, and what did he think about those things, and so on, and that's the kind of discussion we need. And then, at that point, we will give you the direction to go forward and develop an ordinance that will address those items that we feel should be, that we feel should be put into an ordinance in order to change the one we have now.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm gonna agree with Commissioners Maddox and Miller. I, I mean, I, to me, it's just too much of a leap to go from an issue being presented tonight to us voting on it, of this significance, voting on it at our next meeting. And especially now in light of, I mean, I wasn't here when this ordinance was, was taken up by the commission, but in light of the fact that Commissioner Miller says that these issues have, have been discussed, and there were reasons why they were not included in the ordinance that was put before the public, suggests...
The recommendations...
The recommendations.
And these may be different issues, but those were, and so as to the extent that there's overlap, I'd like for us to give it some thought.
Well, yeah, well, then it certainly suggests to me that we oughta at least have a workshop on this, where we have an opportunity to, to discuss the issues here, both sides of the issue, before we bring it to a vote, and also to respect the process of how we bring ordinances, ordinance changes before this commission. I, I don't know that there's necessarily, I mean, I, I agree with you, Commissioner Ziffer, that these are issues that we need to look at. I, I don't think that there's a big rush to do it at this point, because whatever issues might come up, if there are complaints filed, right now, there are ways to address them, either through our local Ethics Board or at the State Ethics Commission. And so I, I would hope that we would take our time and consider this in a rational manner and come to some decision as to how we're gonna move forward as a commission.
Commissioner Ziffer.
So the first thing is, all of us have seen all these items. In fact, there were several more items, I've, I've forgotten how many, there were probably 10 different recommendations. We've all seen those, and those were probably four or five months ago, they were delivered to us in correspondence from Richard Herring. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I'm all for deliberative discussion, and I think we ought to workshop it, but let's do it then sooner than later, so that out of that workshop, if there are 10 different items discussed, four or five may come out where we actually vote on those at the following meeting. But let's not suggest that there are things in place to deal with these, because there are not. That's the problem. This Ethics Board needs more opportunities to deal with things so that it doesn't have to go to the State Board. There are opportunities for us to deal with this locally, and I think we should give them that opportunity. To have a robust conversation, absolutely. I thought that's what we would do when we brought this point, I suggested bring it back in October. If you want to do the workshop, that's fine. Each item can be addressed, each item can be discussed, and out of that workshop, we could come up with whatever recommendations we had to vote on at our following meeting or shortly thereafter. But I'm trying to get this rolling and stop kicking the can down the road. So if, if the city manager could look at future dates for all of us and, and do a workshop as soon as possible and come back with the recommendations from the Ethics Board, maybe you should resend that letter that they sent to us, because it had all of it, those items on it. This is nothing new. The only thing that's new has to do with the audit of our individual offices on an annual basis. That was not included in the recommendations.
City Attorney, while you're in the process of rescinding items, if you could resurrect, because it should be certainly made clear to the public, I think it's probably clear amongst this board, there was a very engaged citizens committee that was formed, they went one by one through a whole set of recommendations, some were accepted, some were rejected, but it was done in a very thorough manner, and I think it was done by level-headed people, not in a reactionary fashion, but in a fashion that created an environment where you took into account the complexities of relationships, the fact that this may be the constitution of this board today, but in the future, and I know that we had, at least I did, I had two previous colleagues who were lawyers, worked in big firms, who found themselves caught up in scenarios, frankly, because of, you know, dog biting man and not man biting dog, and when we think about the opportunity for people in this community to run for office, everybody may not be able to work from their living room. Some folks may be associated with businesses that may complicate their ability to serve here. I think we have to take that into consideration. I think that was taken into consideration before, but we need to resurrect all of those respective pieces, because this, this conversation actually isn't a new one. It's been, well, several years in the making, which have resulted in several actions by this commission and previous commissions that have gone above and beyond, in many cases, what, what preceded it. So we're not, you know, this is not a new conversation, and we're not starting at ground zero. There's a lot on the record here, and we should resurrect all of those pieces, not, not just simply the stuff that has, has, has recently shown up. So look forward to getting that scheduled and having those documents recirculated amongst folks. Commissioners, other items, sharing of idea? Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you. A couple of things. One, storm-related, a couple storm-related. People have asked me about recycling sandbags. I, I would think, you know, you'd use them around the yard, but, Mr. Manager, do, do we want people to dump them back where the, like at Winthrop and those parts, or just use them for themselves?
Just use it for themselves.
All right, there you go. The second thing is, we're still playing...
The second thing is, we're still playing host.
Commissioner, you might want to ask them to just, you might want to recommend that people just keep them in the garage until the end of November, till the season's over.
Right, hopefully, knock on wood that doesn't happen. We're still playing host to many families. I have two different refugee families or evacuee families that are here in Tallahassee. The Santa Fe River has risen to the point where they have now closed Highway 27, they have closed Highway 41, and they're contemplating closing I-75.
Portions they already have, I think.
So with those three roads closed, the only exit for people going to South Florida is going to be I-10 to 95 South. That means a lot of people are going to be coming to Tallahassee. So if you know of folks that need safe haven, please open your homes to them. Also wanted to say word about Skip Smith, a great Tallahasian that we lost to cancer recently with Capital City Bank. Skip worked tirelessly with Committee in '99, supporting law enforcement officers. He was one of those guys that was always there to help and support and never wanted any credit. Just a fantastic Tallahasian, and I want to give a shout out to his family and tell them that we're thinking of them and that we'll miss Skip. And then finally, I know it was mentioned earlier by the mayor about Commissioner Ziffer's election, but I think it's a pretty big deal that, you know, our mayor's running for governor and that our mayor pro tem has been elected by his peers to represent all of the 412 cities in the state of Florida. That's a big deal. That means the eyes of the state of Florida are on Tallahassee, and they're looking to us for leadership. And I appreciate you being on the forefront, and, Mr. Mayor, you as well, of representing us. I'm a former president from a long time ago, but...
Not that long.
And so we have had, actually, four now presidents of the League of Cities that came out of Tallahassee, me, John Marks, Commissioner Ziffer, and Arva Hopkins, who was city manager at the time when Lou Shelley worked for him, I think it was.
Smooth to you.
It's a big deal that our city gets this recognition, so thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being out there and toiling.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other sharing of ideas? All right, if there are no further, we stand at a German.
Nice.
Thank you, sir.
All right.